Okay, council. I call this meeting to order the City Council for the city of Gross Point Park. Play Hut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Here.
Rayland?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Hodges? Hodges?
Here.
Robson?
Here.
Fluid?
Here.
And Mayor Denner?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
To the Republic in which it stands. One nation, visible, liberty, justice for all.
Before we get started, a couple of things I'd like to remind the public to keep your webcams off and your audio muted until invited during public comment if you make a public comment. Also, I'd like to start off the meeting with my making a few comments related to recent events across our nation and our city. First, I believe Gross Point Park strives to be a welcoming community, thriving in part because of our diversity. There is no place, in my view, for racism and injustice in our city. Recent events remind all of us that we cannot stop working to eradicate injustice and discrimination in all of its forms. I have the utmost confidence in the quality of our Public Safety Department. These are the professionals we rely upon to keep us all safe, fight fires, and respond to EMS emergencies. Director Poloni, in his report, will comment regarding ongoing efforts to continuously improve training and professionalism, especially as it relates to recently highlighted concerns from across our country of injustices and biases. I also want to praise the peaceful demonstrations that were conducted in our city this past weekend. I have to say that those in attendance and the public safety community were exemplary, and we all appreciate that. We do have a human rights ordinance on the agenda tonight. While this ordinance has been under development for several months, it turns out it's even more important today as we face up to racial discrimination, and we are in LGBTQ Pride Month. At this time, I'd like to pause the meeting for just a moment and challenge each of us to consider how we can make a difference in both small and large ways to eliminate racism and injustice in any form. Please pause with me for a moment. Thank you. These are important issues, and I want everyone to know that we all here at the city of Gross Point Park take them very seriously. Okay, moving on with the agenda. The first item of business is the approval of minutes. Council, there, you have three sets of minutes before you will deal with these one at a time. There are the budget workshop, the council meeting for May 11th, and the special council meeting for May 18th. So first, let's go to the budget workshop of May 7th. Council, what's your pleasure? I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Your support?
Second?
Councilmember Hodges, any discussion? Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. The next are the minutes from our council meeting on May 11th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move, Mayor Denner.
Councilmember Hodges, is there support?
I'll support.
Councilmember Reed? Discussion. Councilmember Fluid?
On page six, toward the top. And we actually received an email about this today, so I'm not sure if everyone has seen it. Based on the comments presented by City Manager Sidesland, nine residents supported the plan and five residents were opposed to the development plan. I think that needs to be double-checked. Speaking for myself, most of the emails I got were either for or against the DPW building itself, not the actual development plan. And I think that's a big enough difference. Those are two very separate issues that the minutes should reflect that. So I don't know if you want to check the email that was presented if maybe Jane can go back and look at her notes, but that might be something that needs to be corrected.
Does the administration have any observation on that?
I'll just say that the ones that may have, council may have received would, might be different than what Leah Smith made, but we could certainly check. I know that some emails that were shared to council were not submitted through the public comment guidelines to Leah, so that may be it, but we could double-check for Councilmember Fluid if she would like so in the council.
I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, so we could approve these minutes subject to verification by the administration on that point. Will the person that moved, Councilmember Hodges, I think, support that?
Yes.
And the second, or Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yes, on the same page, there's a paragraph that starts with my councilmember Reed, and it summarizes my comments. It doesn't fully capture what I said, and I know our minutes don't necessarily have to capture everything we said, but I think it's somewhat misleading because it indicates that I said I will not vote for a new plan that is not in compliance, and I said more than that. So I can either...
Do you have a phrase that you wanted to add, or what do you recommend?
Yes, I would add that that I said that plus a plan that does not fully address the needs of the district and is not based on the master plan.
That does not... Needs of district. And is based on master plan. Clerk Play Hut, did you get that?
Yes.
Will the Councilmember Hodges, do you accept that as a change to the...
Yes, I do accept that change.
Okay. And obviously, Councilmember Reed supports that, because it was her thoughts. Okay, fine, thank you. I saw Councilmember Hodges hand up earlier.
Yes, please. My notes show that the topic of the Marina came up during the budget discussion, and again, I understand the need for austerity and how many words are used when preparing the minutes. With that said, however, because it is a health and safety-related issue, I would like it on the record that I did bring that to the attention of the body, and would like to see that there.
Where would that occur in your...
Well, somewhere within the budget hearing, and I think it was closer to the end of that discussion.
Probably on Resolution Number Three, which dealt with the actual budgets. Did you want to make us recommend a sentence that would be added to the discussion immediately after the section in Resolution Three that has the numbers where...
Sure, just that I...
It would probably be after the motion on page 11. Start to have comments.
On page 12, it says, Councilmember Rayland, I think that followed up right after Councilmember Hodges asked about that. I said that there's going to be long-term plans.
Inquired if there are long-term plans for the Marina, right, page 12.
Yeah, that's exactly the spot, because you're correct, Member Rayland. It was in tandem with that point of the conversation, and at that time, just highlighted. So if we could say, highlight the significance of keeping health and safety-related concerns and expenditures a priority, of which I see the Marina as one, so that we are not negligent in any way.
Okay, so health and safety concerns. Clerk Play Hut, do you have that?
No, could you repeat that, Michelle?
Yes, impressing upon the importance of keeping health and safety-related concerns and expenditures a priority, of which we would, I would see the Marina as one, to avoid negligence of any sort.
Okay. Does the Councilmember Reed, do you accept that modification?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none with those approved modifications and one verification. Let's call the question. Clerk Play Hut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, thank you. I would ask council to try, to the extent that they can, if they see something that they're going to bring up as a change to the draft minutes, if you can send an email to Clerk Play Hut so that the language that you're recommending, and you will recommend verbally in our discussion, can be captured in advance by the clerk. That's probably, would probably help her job. Okay, thank you.
Is there any way, sorry, Mr. Mayor, is there any way to get the minutes before we get the agenda? Because getting these on Friday afternoon, it's really hard to go through everything. Work on Monday.
We'll ask the administration to endeavor to do their best.
Yeah, I would support that. There was a lot of reading and research for this meeting in particular, and the minutes may have gotten put by the wayside by many of us in light of the other agenda items.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more set of minutes, special council meeting on May 18th. I have a motion to approve. Councilmember Rayland, support?
I'll support.
Mayor Pro Tim Robson, discussion? On Clerk Play Hut, let's call the question. Clerk Play Hut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report, City Manager Sidesland.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So before you tonight, council, I'll read off a manager's report of activities within the city of Gross Point Park, including city reopening. The city is preparing at this time for reopening to the public by June 15th. That would be next Monday at GPP City Hall, the court, and park and rec offices. Currently, six feet social distance stickers have been ordered and assembled, plexiglass behind front counters installed. Considerations for appointments are being evaluated at this time, and the Lavins Activity Center will remain closed until right around the opening of the pool. Regarding the city pool, the city had been evaluating opening the pool this year due to COVID-19 and working with the other Gross Point communities in coordinating efforts. Recently, the county health departments of Wayne, Oakland, McComb, and City of Detroit had asked that all public pools be closed for the season. However, this changed within a week of the governor's latest executive order lifting "Stay Home, Stay Safe." The various health departments reversed course and would allow pools to be open. Tentatively, we are looking at July 1 for a pool opening. In order for this to happen, we need to bring our pool cleaning company in, receive approval from the county health department, ensure all lifeguards are hired, and guidelines for admittance into the pool are set. Regarding the Marina, the city has purchased U.S. Coast Guard-approved marker buoys of solar-powered lights for the lower section of the seawall. We're looking into possible addition of wood risers on a section of the main walkway on Pier Two and some finger piers in that section, and temporary safety fencing along the park perimeter and Marina has been installed. Moving on to Rocket Fiber. Rocket Fiber has started construction today on the alley near Mac Avenue. Fairfax Avenue will continue with work on East Jefferson and the North DeFer parking lot. Eighty percent of the work will be aerial, and the other twenty percent will be underground work. Work is expected to finish late summer to early fall. And for those who don't know what Rocket Fiber is, that is the selected contractor by Gross Point Public School System to have a fiber ring around the Gross Point communities. DTE as well just started their construction of Phase Two today. They're working with their contractors Infra Source and Backer Landscaping to finish landscaping. That was unfinished in the fall of winter in 2019. And currently, as of right now, they're starting a Windmill Point Park. In preparation for their work, DTE employees will be wearing PPE equipment, and expect more DTE vehicles in town as employees are being relegated to one employee per vehicle. I would highly encourage the city council and the public, for restoration concerns, please have residents call DTE at 313-270-9240. And if you've received no response by DT or not to your satisfaction, please have your email sent to our Public Works Supervisor, Pat Thomas, at thomasp@grosspointpark.org. And the city has information online, and will be posting updates as they become available. Including, within the information online, there is a map that you're able to look at and highlight which sections of the city you'll be in. So this will be starting at Westchester and working its way towards Wayburn, north and south. Regarding the ethics ordinance and council rules and conduct, the ordinance review committee reviewed the proposed ethics ordinance and decided that further clarification and language was needed. At this time, ordinance review will meet tentatively on June 30th with a revision for the July council meeting. After reviewing the proposed ordinance and conduct section of the draft document prepared at our May 18th council meeting, the administration needs to add a little more refinement in the final draft of the rules, and I hope to have the document ready for available for a vote on the July council meeting. And finally, proposed road construction work. The city and its contractor engineer OHM advisors had created a Pazer rating map of Gross Point Park, which identifies areas of concentration for roadwork on a scale of one to 10, one being the worst, 10 being the best road. The proposed areas the city is considering, just waiting for cost right now, are the 1,400 Block of Yorkshire, 1,400 Bedford, Charlevoy from Three Mile to Whittier, this is near St. Clair-Monofalco, Bishop Road South, Essex from Harcourt to Bedford, Essex from Whittier to Autobahn, Essex from Belfort to Westchester, and considerations for the City Hall parking lot and Patterson parking lot and the alley behind Encourtable, Lake Point Beacons Field. These areas were specifically selected due to their necessity of repair and were away from DT infrastructure work within the city. Mayor, that is my city manager update, and now I have a statement on behalf of the city regarding recent events.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
To the residents of Gross Point Park, what happened to George Floyd cannot be ignored. The painful examples of racism and social injustice reflected in the senseless death are incredibly disturbing, and it is clear that immediate change is necessary. We condemn hatred, racism, prejudice, and violence. Racism that exists today in all forms is not acceptable. Right is right, and wrong is wrong. The city welcomes changes and reforms from our leaders at the federal and state level, including Governor Whitmer's plans for police reform to promote racial equality. Specifically, our Public Safety Department will continue its efforts to enhance their training and policies to help create a culture where all residents are treated with dignity and respect. I commend our public safety and our neighboring departments for ensuring the safety of various demonstrations throughout the last week and the professionalism they have shown for reaching out, walking into the various groups of people. Our officers have taken an oath to protect and serve all. The city will listen and continue to educate in how we can make a difference, and together, we will find solutions through necessary dialogue and a collective effort. The events over the past week are a hurtful reminder that we have a long way to go with inclusion, diversity, for all people. We have a responsibility to create positive change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think that concludes that agenda item. Next agenda item would be the Public Safety Report, where we have Director Poloni, I believe, is available. Are you going to activate your video and deliver your report? Ah, there it is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So really, just to follow up, I think it's easy to say I agree with everything that Nick and the mayor said from a statement of recent events, and I think that, at least, you know, over my tenure here, we've always done that diligently and will continue to do so. We did have four marches, protest marches, to date through the city and through Gross Point City both, and everything went really smooth. We've met with organizers when we could in advance, made sure that their safety was paramount and that we took care of all the issues that we had to, for that, for those to be successful. I met with them afterwards. We've had some really good conversations. I did speak at a couple of them, and so, again, I'm very proud of the participants, that everything has been smooth. I also represented the city and the NAACP meetings that we had last week for the committee to engage in dialogue, to have open and honest dialogue. So we set the foundation for that, and I'm representing Gross Point Park and Gross Point City on that committee. And so I'm looking forward to that interaction with the NAACP, and we'll be looking at different things and meeting on a regular basis. And really, the biggest thing is to build some relationships, was one of the points I thought was important last week when we met, so that we know, you know, we have an open-door policy, obviously, in my office, and we shared that, and so that's one good. And the topic of training, we regularly, every year, at the beginning of the year, the first month of the year, we always, we have policies when it comes to use of force, lethal force, non-lethal force, discrimination, all those things. Every officer trains on that at the beginning of the year. We also have signed up with a company called Virtual Academy, where our officers earn credits, and those topics, cultural diversity, biases. There's a hundred different kinds of courses our officers will be taking and earning credits and all those things. So on the training end of it, we do that, and we'll continue to do that, and we're always looking to improve. And that completes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Chief. I'm very proud of our, you and the department. I think that the professionalism that you fostered is a tribute to your leadership, and all of us really benefit from it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hodges?
Mayor Denner, would it be appropriate to ask where we're at with hiring as well on the force? I believe we had an open seat or two, and just curious where that is at and how we're working to ensure a diverse police force?
So we currently, we put a freeze on hiring due to the recent COVID and budget cuts that we were having, so we have put a freeze on our hiring. We have, we have one commitment for a hire, and so at this point, we're not hiring anyone further other than one commitment that we already have from someone that was in the Coast Guard that we had already committed to. So at this point, we will be doing no hiring until we have some more retirements or until we find a budget to replace the one officer that we're going to be down.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Hodges also, so one of the things that I talked to a couple of council people about this, one of the difficulties we have currently, all departments are having a problem with, first of all, finding candidates that want to be police officers. We have a vast shortage in the state of Michigan. The second thing is that we also have a vast shortage of minority applicants. And after the meeting, I met with a group of young men, minority, after the two marches and NAACP, and we talked about looking and trying to find ways to get more minorities involved or interested in going into the police force. So we've had those open discussions, and we'll continue to do that. And again, we're always looking to have diversity if we can, so that's where we're at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see a face that I don't recognize. As a member of the administration of the council, I'd ask you to please turn off your video and keep on mute, and thank you. Councilmember Fluid?
Related to what Chief Poloni was just talking about, I think it would not be a bad idea if the bias training that our police officers are using, not the use-of-force training, obviously, but if there is bias training that would be applicable to others, people other than law enforcement officers. I don't think it would be a bad thing if we're able for all of the city council members to also attend.
Fair.
Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
I would echo Member Fluid's comments. Training is good for everybody, including administration, city council. I would be very much interested participating in auditing all sorts of training, including bias training. It's a good idea. I do want to commend our department, the leadership of the chief. We do have an outstanding police department, Public Safety Department. Can always strive to do better, but let us not, we decided the fact that, I think, all council members, the biggest compliments we get are on our public safety officers. I appreciate that. But just as important as training, from my experience, is the act of hiring, to hire the brightest and the best. When you do that, then you don't have problematic police officers afterwards. So it's just as important as training, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I think we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the Public State, which is the Library Board appointment. There, the way that the Library Board works is that each of the, each of the cities and the points has the opportunity to appoint one member to the board, as well as there's one at large which rotates. Our member of the board, the position for our member of the board comes up for, at the end of this month. The library did circulate a request for applications and received two applications in April. One from our incumbent, Bob Plaza, and another from Susan Higman Larson. Bob, as most of you know, my biases are usually to keep incumbents in their position if they want to continue to serve. And Bob's done a terrific job on the Library Board over many, many years. And so I talked to him about that, and I also talked to him about the fact that he is a key member of our community volunteer force as well in his role as chairman of our Parks and Recreation Commission. So he and I talked about the many things that the Rec Commission needs to address over the coming years and agreed that it would be, that he can best help the city by focusing on those issues. Now, we wouldn't have had that discussion if I hadn't already gotten an outstanding application from Susan Higman Larson. So that is who I am proposing to be appointed. And council, you have her application and resume before you. She's a resident of Kensington Avenue. Her background is in writing, editing, and publishing, and she's also has had prominent roles at the Detroit Institute of Arts. She has a depth of experience in those things that are closely related to the business of libraries. And I was very impressed with her resume, also very impressed with the discussion that I had with her. So with that, I would like to move that we appoint Susan Higman Larson as our Gross Point Park representative to the Library Board. Is there support? Number Reed? Any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, just a couple of points of clarification is, I understand, so Mr. Plaza has formally withdrawn his application. Is that correct?
No, I wouldn't say, there was no withdrawal process. He and I discussed the notion that it would be in the city's interest for him to focus on rec and also discuss the possibility of this other person being appointed.
I understand. Um, I, just, my understanding of the process and the library board charter is that in the event of multiple applicants, there's, there's supposed to be a public interview process of, that, that is correct. I'm pretty sure on that. So, that's why I have a question of whether, and, and I know he actually submitted his application after the deadline. I don't know whether it was accepted or not, so.
Yeah, it was technically after the deadline, so that was potentially a procedural issue. At the, at the point of the, of the deadline, those separate library, we only, we did only have the one application.
Right. I, I, I'm just, just in terms of process, that's, and I did check with the library director, it's a, and I read their, their charter, for lack of a better term, and it's supposed to be a public interview process of applicants. So, if there's only one applicant, then I don't see the need for a public interview process, and, and I agree with you, otherwise, we have an excellent candidate, and I would support advancing her, but I, I was just wanting clarification on whether we had more than one applicant.
Yeah, they, the procedural issue was, was unclear, but it was clear in my discussion, discussion with Mr. Plaza, that he was happy to step down. So, in that sense, we, we only have one active applicant. Mayor Potem Robson.
Yes, Mayor, more on process. I think this candidate is fantastic. Her resume is off the charts, but I would be remiss if I didn't say I'm somewhat disappointed with the notification process of the library board. To my understanding, there was one singular posting in the Rose Point News in the middle of January, and that was the only posting. Given all the notification resources the library board has, that's very disappointing, and it's lacking a little bit in transparency, in, in my opinion. As it turned out, we only had one applicant before that deadline. We have a, a population of 11,000, and we only had one applicant. I'm sure there are other people who might have been more interested in the position, had there been notification. So, that's my complaint, and I'm hoping the library board will do better in the future. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. Any other discussion? With that, let's call the question. First, please call the roll.
Councilmember Granow.
Yes.
Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of a budget amendment. I'll ask the administration to introduce it. My understanding of this, for those of you that are new to council, as we get to the end of each fiscal year, it's responsibility of the administration to examine the actual expenditures against our budget, and to the extent some recognition of an amendment makes sense, it's their responsibility to recommend it to us to reflect the actual expenditures. So, that's my understanding. City Manager Seisland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So, yes, you are correct. These are items that originally were not budgeted for in the fiscal year 1920. I'll just run through a couple quick, and then the Finance Director Blayhut comment. You'll see the MML searches for the city manager, insurance and bonds, trust 115, transfer out of the marina that the council voted on a couple months back, local street improvements. You're going to see a big change there due to fund reserves able for paying for those streets, court-appointed attorney, CDBG, we're waiting on reimbursement from Wayne County right now for the other, just short of 10,000 for the $20,000 grant, bond debt, road fund transferring out of major and local streets, the construction bond series for City Hall, construction expenditures, 435, engineering, you'll see that doubled. This was due to more costs and looking into our pump station and looking at alternatives for relief and our marina fund. Clerk Blayhut, Finance Director, any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay. I will, to get this started, I will move that we adopt the budget amendment as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Granow. Discussion? Councilmember Flue?
On the second page, the 435,000, is that for the purchase of the facility that's going to be the DPW?
No, this is actually part of the construction bond. So, this would be the fire truck that was purchased, cost for bond agent, and boiler facility over at Park and Recreation. They needed a new water heater.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? With that, we'll call the question. First, please call the roll.
Councilmember Granow.
Yes.
Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes. Motion passes. Next item is the extension of recycling services, contract resolution. Turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Council before you, as a summary of the activities regarding the contract extension for Green for Life, the cities of the park, farms, shores, and city have a recycling contract with GFL. This is set to expire on June 30th of this year. Due to the recycling costs and level of services provided to the cities, we worked with Resource Recycling Systems to redevelop a bid document administered by Rose Point Farms to reflect the changing recycling market and see competitive rates. However, at the exact time this was being considered, COVID-19 hit, and it was decided upon by the RRS consultants that the market would be better suited to wait further in the year for submittal. Working with Green for Life, the cities and Rose Point Farms saw the six-month extension of services for the same price of $3.99 per unit per month. GFL came back with an extension of current prices of $3.99 from July 1 to October 1 of 2020. Afterwards, the price would reflect to 26 cent increase with a 2% annual increase, and the new rate would be effective October 1, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. The cities are intending to review the document further to see if there's any changes necessarily that need to be made before submission to the market. For competitive pricing before the new document, the new prices start in October 1 of 2020. So, I'm asking the city council today to authorize the city manager to sign this document. On that, I'll take any questions or concerns from the council.
So, we probably should get a resolution on the floor, and then we can, and we can go from there. So, the, the, the document that you've been asked to approve is, is included in the council packet, and it does what you just, I'd like, so I'll get it on the floor, and then we can, we can have a discussion. Move that we resolve to approve the extension of our recycling contract and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Granow, and then, discussion. Councilmember Reed.
So, City Manager Seisland, just so I'm clear, they're giving us an extension and a new rate for the year October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2021, but it's our hope to find an alternate recycling vendor before then. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Councilmember Hodges.
I do think it's important for the document to reflect that we're not committing, entering into a contractual relationship through September of 2021. I think that's rather unclear, and should note that at this point, we're only seeking a six-month extension. And then, the letter that they've conveyed and are asking to be executed indicates that it's our understanding that our residents have been very satisfied with their service levels, which I'm not certain that's a truthful statement, and I think we need to exercise our authority to ensure that the vendor is very clear that there is some concern with the performance, and that that's made clear, and then also made very clear as to the length of the commitment that we're willing to make, and that we endeavor to pursue bids as soon as possible.
And just to comment real quick, Councilmember Hodges, reviewing these documents real quick, you are correct. We are not satisfied as the gross points. I think Green for Life just put that down as a boilerplate. Just wanted to let you know.
And so, are we committing to the end of September 30th, 2021, which is really how this document reads?
That is correct. Our intention right now is we are going to commit to this document through September 30. However, our intent as a Rose Point Communities Group is to go for a bid out before the new rates become effective October 1, 2020, and Green for Life has already said that they're okay with us going out for bid.
But that's not what this document says. It commits us. I think we should allow ourselves the ability to.
Can I, can I ask a, a potentially a clarifying question here? This, this refers to extend, to extending, extending the contract, and the terms of the contract, I assume, provide for the rebid and, and placement of the services, so that this document doesn't supersede whatever those terms are in the contract. Is that, is that accurate, City Manager?
That is correct, Mayor Danner.
Okay.
Does our city attorney recommend that that, that this be made more clear, even that explanation?
Yeah, and, and I have not reviewed the original contract, and I would want to do that. I, your point, Councilmember Hodges, is well taken. In fact, Nick and I discussed that earlier today. I, I think the problem is the letter, this letter agreement is ambiguous. I, I think it's easy to read it as not committing us to September 30th, 2021. It commits them to adhere to a stated rate, but I think from a legal perspective, I'd be more comfortable if the document itself, or if it's covered by the original document, and I could review that, that it be clear that, you know, we are not obligated to abide by this letter agreement through September 30th, 2021, if we put it out to bid and decide to go in another direction. I, it's clear to me that that's been the discussion that the city manager has had with Green for Life, but I, I would like to see more clarity reflected in this document.
But I would like to then propose that I amend my, my motion to say subject to city attorney confirming that the terms of the contract allow for the bid and reward of the contract prior to September 30th, 2021.
Accept that.
Review that.
You would accept that, Councilmember Granow? I think you were the second.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, and just, we have, what, three other signatories, the, the city, the farms, and the shores, so we need to make sure they're all on board with our city attorney's vetting of the language as well.
I would agree, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Reed.
Okay. Anything else? With that, let's call the question. First, please call the roll.
Councilmember Granow.
Yes.
Raylan. Raylan.
Mayor Danner, this is Assistant to the Manager Smith. Councilmember Raylan texted us and said that he's having connection issues. It's nothing on our end. He's trying to reconnect at this point, but, and right now, he's not able to. I asked him if he wanted to call in, and he said he will try to do that, but I might, this might be him. Give me one second. Okay, I think he's back on, so I will unmute him, and Council, Finance Director Blayhut, if you want to continue with roll.
Councilmember Raylan, oh, there you are. This is, we're doing the vote on the recycling extension.
Yeah, I was listening, so thank you. Thank you. Technical. Yes.
Councilmember Raylan, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. For, yeah, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the expansion of outdoor dining and retail, and retail. There's been a lot of interest in our community and in other communities that, due to the restrictions to keep people safe in the face of reopening businesses in the pandemic, that we consider allowing and providing for additional outdoor spaces for our businesses. So, I'll turn it over to the city manager for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So, city council before you tonight, we're asking for a resolution authorizing temporary uses of a public right-of-way in streets for COVID-19 business support. And so, I'll read through a summary. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic through our country in the state of Michigan, businesses had been shut down in the B1 general and local districts within the city of GPP by the executive order of Michigan's Governor Gretchen Whitmer. As businesses begin of how to think, how to reopen on Monday, June 8th, today, the city intends to offer a range of possible strategies to assist them by allowing uses of public sidewalks, streets, parking lots, and on-street spaces. The city may be able to offer more spaces for their business activities while maintaining new social distancing requirements prescribed by the governor. Some of all these strategies the city could, to explore, could include restaurant carryout pickup in designated street parking spaces, store pickup in designated on-street parking spaces, temporary street closure, outdoor sales permission on sidewalks, outdoor tape markings on sidewalks allowing social distancing spacing for lineups into the stores to avoid the overcapacity, outdoor sales permissions in designated on-street parking uses using the Parklit platform, which you will see in your packet as a, could be a wood frame that, you know, supports dining room tables and such out there. Outdoor dining permission in designated on-street parking space using the Parklit platform again. Explore dining patio space permission on public sidewalks. And of particular interest to the city is exploring the social district, if passed by the State of Michigan House Bill 5781. For those of you who have visited New Orleans and/or Toledo, this would allow for a district, we'll take a district for Kirchvile, for example, that would allow these restaurants and businesses to be able to serve alcohol, and people would be able to walk within that district with disposable cups. The resolution attached for city council provides authorization for a temporary way of allowing these initiatives and expediting approval for businesses by the city. If they work well, after careful evaluation, a permanent authorization could be reviewed by the city council at a later time. Also, this use of the public right-of-way would be proposed to be extended free of charge for one year as a temporary measure per allowed timeframe of these initiatives. As well, if approved, the city manager would seek support from the DDA and TIFIL boards for assistance with these measures. The city administration has continually reached out to its businesses into the Chamber of Commerce, and will continue to do so in determining the interest, determine interest in these methods of providing support, so that a coordinated strategy could be worked out in specified locations while avoiding conflicting uses of the right-of-way. The city manager would have the authority under the proposed resolution to work out the details of the options that commercial businesses may wish to employ. At this time as well, the city administration with the building department is seeking, they're actually editing a application document right now that would be put on the city website and submitted to the businesses. That would ask for insurance, you know, naming the city as a limited liability, drawing of where you would like to have your proposed area, considerations for talking with fellow businesses next to you. If, if you're a business that has a restaurant, but your partner's next door office space, you know, would you be okay talking with them and getting authorization to use their sidewalk spaces? So, those are the things that we're looking into right now. And so, with that said, I'm asking if the city council would look to approve the attached resolution. Thank you. attached resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Just a question, clarification. My understanding is that this sort of a temporary authorization is being pursued in other cities, and I believe Gross Point City may have done something similar recently. Is that true?
That is true, and I know Gross Point Farms is looking at this tonight, Muskegon, Traverse City, Plymouth, and I know parts of Ann Arbor. So you're going to see within the news a bunch of cities having these same initiatives to help out the businesses due to the 50% capacity in trying to help, you know, support our downtowns.
Okay, thank you. There is a resolution in your package. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Councilmember Reed? Is there support?
Or?
Mayor Pro Tim Robson, discussion. Councilmember Luit?
Just noting that it says the city manager will seek support from the DDA and Tifa boards. Can you specify, I'm completely on board with that, but can you specify, would DDA and Tifa be helping these businesses to purchase the materials that they would need to move, you know, dining outside? And have you given any thought, are we far enough along in the process that you could say exactly, not exactly, but you have a general idea of what types of items DDA and Tifa would be helping to purchase for these businesses?
We're currently looking into those right now. One of the things that I think we're going to look into providing, as you can see in your document here, is the Parklit platforms, being able to provide that. And that's something we're still trying to consider, what other areas we could help the districts right now. So we're reviewing those right now. But it's something that I'm really excited to be able to, you know, talk to both the boards and see if we can help out our businesses. And we'll continue to... Go ahead.
Could we commit to, you know, touching base with every single one of our businesses and doing some kind of survey to find out exactly what they would need to make this move to outdoor dining? Because it's my understanding then, if you can, if you can buy these items in bulk, you know, hopefully there would be a discount for that. And it would be within the rules of our DDA and Tifa because we'd be providing a benefit to a lot of businesses at once and not just to one particular company or owner.
And I'll touch base, Councilmember Luit, with the Chamber of Commerce. I know they did, they were talking with a bunch of their businesses, I believe, through a survey, or at least we're going to start one, so maybe I can try and help include on that. But yes, I think that's a great idea.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, so just to add to that, is the support of the DDA and Tifa, those funds that were earmarked in the budget process for COVID relief, or are these additional funds, or do we know?
As of right now, this would be the COVID funds that we've approved. So that'd be about $50,000 in the Tifa and $10,000 in the DDA, and that's where we are at right now. And if we can spend in other areas, we'll continue to look so throughout the Tifa and DDA budget.
I think this is, my understanding is that this is an important first step, which provides city support so that the DDA and Tifa can structure a program that would be effective along these lines. It also avoids delays in the process of approvals so that our administration can pursue this with our businesses as we're entering right now into the season where this can be of benefit to our newly reopened businesses. So this is really to try and get us out of the way, I think.
Yeah, and as soon as, you know, we're able to have our permit process ready and approval, those business establishments, especially those that serve spirits, will be able to go to the Liquor Control Commission, which at this time, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission is doing their very best to fast-track and approve this so we can get, you know, these businesses as help as soon as possible.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Let's call the question. Quick playhead, please call the roll.
Yes, I have a question. Councilmember Robson, I have you supporting the motion. Who actually made the motion?
I think I did, but I was muted. I raised my hand.
I think I heard you, actually, Councilmember Reed. Well, maybe you were, I don't know. Councilmember Reed.
Okay, so, okay, all right. Councilmember Granow?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Luit?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. I'm excited about this opportunity. We've got a lot of businesses that have potential to benefit from this. I've talked to several of the restaurant bar owners that are really looking to do this, and it's important to have this flexibility because almost every situation is a little bit different. You know, some have parking lots, some don't, some are storefront, have narrow storefronts, some have wide storefronts. There's quite a range of situations, so this will be terrific for our businesses, I believe. Okay, moving on. The next item of business is adoption of the Tifa amended development plan. Let me give a little introduction and reminder here. So the, we did have a public hearing that was completed on May 11th for the proposed amended Tifa development plan. The council is now charged with acting on the amended plan. A bit of history, council voted unanimously in December to direct the administration to pursue construction of a new DPW on Mac subject to several conditions. One of the conditions was that the project be financed through Tifa tax recapture and donors. This amendment is primarily to provide specific supporting language for the construction and financing of the new DPW facility on Mac from Wayburn to Lake Point. It was developed with substantial input from Barbara Bowman, the Bodman Firm Expert, municipal finance and TIFs. The plan was approved by the Tifa Board, which, to remind all, consists of the owners of many of our prominent businesses as well as residential representatives. The plans for the DPW project were recently discussed at the Public Service Committee meeting, in a public meeting. And there are a number of next steps to be pursued after adoption of the plan. There's the City Pledge of Full Faith and Credit for a future issuance of a Tifa bond. That's on the agenda tonight. There'll be a review of the site plan and the plans in a public meeting in the Planning Commission. That'll be scheduled as soon as the architect is prepared to support it, which we expected to be within a few weeks. Completion of the bid process for a construction firm, this is important to finalize costs that will inform the details of the ultimate Tifa bond that's issued. The Tifa then has to approve the issuing of a bond, and this will be a lengthy document. It will be developed by our Bond Counsel, Barbara Bowman, and based on her experience and also the other bonds that we've approved over the years with, from the city. It could be, it could run to 20 to 30 pages, so it's an important legal document. Then there's the actual sale of the bond by our bond consultant and Benzinski and Company, who have worked with the city for a number of years on issuance of bonds. So I wanted to highlight those, those steps after that we would, we would approve the amended Tifa development plan. This is really the first, the next step in a series of steps intended to enable the financing of the, of the new DPW on Mac. There is a resolution in your, in your package that, to adopt the amended plan. I think the appropriate way to start it would be to move that the resolution be adopted as presented and then open discussion. So I move that we adopt it as presented, and is there a support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Granow. Discussion. I'm sure there'll be a few. Councilmember Luit?
Um, I think the master plan has to be done first. That's very concise. But I think the Tifa plan, I don't just think by law the Tifa plan needs to fall under our master plan. And aside from that issue, I think the Tifa plan needs more input from businesses. I think it needs specific detail. I would like to know that, that businesses were, were reached out to. I know, I know there was a public hearing. But again, when I have talked to businesses about the input that they've had on these issues lately, what I've been told is that they have not been reached out to individually. And I can probably, I can probably leave it at that.
Okay. Commenting on the, on the outreach, in, as a part of the, of leading up to the public hearing, there was a notice delivered to everyone within the business, the Tifa district, both residential and businesses, notifying them of the public hearing and the availability of the plan review. So there was, that was clearly, at least out there from a communication perspective. And I know you know that, but I just want to make sure others were clear on that.
Yes, yeah. And what I, what I saw at the last, at the, at the Tifa meeting, not regarding the approval of the budget, but the last in-person Tifa meeting that they have, that they had, was the Board of Directors being told, hey, you guys, go out there and talk to people and see if they have any ideas. And I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to cut it. I think our Tifa plan should be very detailed. I think projects should be well-defined. And it's, it's just kind of like what we're asking for with the master plan. A bigger, very aspirational plan that has a lot of information in it. And those two puzzle pieces need to fit together.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I think it's worth noting that the notice went out during the pandemic. So to the business owners and residents of the district, many of them are treading water, trying to keep their businesses alive, maybe trying to keep their homes or roof over their head, maybe they've lost jobs. So, I mean, a lot has changed since we first looked at this back in December, I'll say that. It's my understanding, this is the first amendment to the plan since 2012, and it appears that the only real amendment here is for the DPW. And I was going through, let's see, section 4B regarding housing and commercial rehabilitation. As I read the plan, they talk, it appears that the plan is for the Tifa to purchase and renovate properties, as opposed to, for example, I know way, many years, probably about 20, maybe 25 years ago, the Tifa actually provided loans to homeowners for them to renovate their own properties. And in the, in the body of that section 4B, it says that the renovations will consist of practical improvements and architectural styles that property owners can learn from and develop a greater sense of pride within the Tifa district. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but it sounds like Tifa would buy these properties and restyle them, and then the neighbors would see how nice it looks and decide to do that themselves. So that's not real well-defined. And I would concur with Councilmember Luit that in all my research and engagement with residents, including some very learned and highly credentialed residents of our city who understand this process far better than I, the master plan is the key document, and everything flows from that. And then just a couple of other housekeeping items. Part of our original motion included having OHM provide an assessment of city-owned property and where DPW building would fit, or if this was the best place for a DPW. And I know I have not seen that analysis. I don't know if anyone else has. So that's a missing piece for me. But then there were some other discrepancies in the plan itself in terms of when the work would be completed, because it includes parking, housing, and commercial property rehab, street and public safety. And it provides a range from five to eight years for parking completion, and that's a $4 million project. $4 million for housing and commercial property rehab over 16 years. The, the DPW building is in there as well. And then on page 13, it says the work would be completed by 2026. So my reading is not very well-defined. I guess those are my comments, at least for now.
Okay. City Attorney?
Yeah, if I could just quickly address, because it's, it's come up a couple times already, and it's been, I think, raised in some emails I've seen, the master plan as it relates to the amended Tifa development plan. What the statute says is that the Tifa plan needs to be in a reasonable accord with the master plan. I know the amendment to the master plan is not completed. I did have a very brief chance to review the original master plan that still exists. And so I think from a legal standpoint, at least by my analysis, we don't have a master plan problem that would prohibit passage of the amended Tifa plan. In other words, I think it's fair to say, given the language of the master plan, what this is trying to accomplish, that from a legal standpoint, I would say that it is in reasonable accord with the original master plan, and certainly with more specific references, would be in accord with the amended master plan. But there's no requirement that the master plan specifically addressed something like the new DPW building or something to that effect. Again, the statutory language is in reasonable accord with the master plan. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that master plan issue has come up many times.
I understand that, and that my, my, my comment isn't so much in terms of whether we are in legal compliance, but we rejected the master plan that was put forth, and we asked for a better plan. And from a better plan flows all the better ideas and the community engagement. And one more comment, I guess, before I yield the floor. In reviewing the minutes, Councilmember Robson said this, by postponing our vote, it will allow time for more public engagement. And the public engagement that I've received on the Tifa plan, this isn't about the Art Center, this isn't about the DPW, on the Tifa plan overwhelmingly have said this does not adequately serve our needs, in particular from residents of the Tiff District.
Yeah, Councilmember Granow? I think...
Yeah, I do, I do have a comment. I was just unmuting. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jake. I was just about to say the same thing. And in fact, I went back and read the 2010 master plan, which was the master plan in effect at this time. And in it, from over a decade ago, it says, replace and upgrade our public works facility. And so it's been the plan of this community for over a decade to replace this facility. And the plan, really, the amendment here is really all about amending it so that the DPW facility can be built. And so I think that's important. I think it's important that the plan, even going back to 2010, indicated that Jefferson is the main entrance, that it should be cleaned up, that the blight on the north side of the street should be removed. It talks about Mac Avenue from Alter to Wayburn. It talks about specifically that that area is in need of extra special attention, and this plan addresses that. It talks about sidewalks improvement on Mac, which we've done, talks about other improvements on Mac we've done. The only thing we really haven't done is a major investment at the border of our community, at the entrance of our community to stabilize Mac. So I think that... Their plan. Secondly, the master plan that was developed and rejected, I think, talked about this. And there's no reason for me to believe, being that the one that's in effect currently and the one that was rejected, both talked about these types of developments had that, that it wouldn't, a future plan wouldn't have that. And so I think I'm comfortable, and I appreciate the city attorney for giving us the legal language. I think the two plans will be reasonably in accord. I'm not as interested in having, I'll put it this way, I'm more comfortable in having a 30,000-foot view for the Tifa board and letting them do the detail work. And I think this document provides them with the ultimate goals we want them to pursue without... without getting into the nitty-gritty, which I think the board should be working on and not the city council. So I fully support moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comment? Someone else? Councilmember Rollin?
Yeah, I'd like to also add that this master plan not being up to par, we are Gross Point Park, and we should have a really badass master plan, and we don't. It's really, really, really weak. And we brought that to effect, and we voted on it to reject it. So that tells you how the council feels about the master plan. It's not just one or two people. It's the majority of councils. Everything should flow from that master plan, including this Tifa amended plan. Our community outreach to our residents and our businesses needs to start from the front end. My wife and I went to five or six restaurants in the last three weeks and talked to them last month and talked to them. And they're they're they haven't been talked to or reached out to, or have been been helped by helped by Tifa. The residents are really concerned about the dilapidated sidewalks, just on Maryland, just down the street from City Hall, the sidewalks are wrecked. And we're looking to spend almost $400,000 each year for a DPW building, which I agree, we need a new DPW building. I would love it, but it should flow from this master plan. The other thing is COVID. We don't know how much money. We just amended our budget to add $60,000 to COVID relief. We don't know if that's enough. We don't know how long this is going to last. And yet, again, we're looking to spend, you know, two, a third of our budget on a DPW building. And again, the amended plan for Tifa, the only change was the DPW. And that was mentioned blatantly. The other thing I'd like to see is strategies. We have some empty spaces on Churchill, empty spaces on Charlotte that we we should see some strategies to fill these, as well as incubating new businesses. That'd be a nice thing to add into this amendment plan, but I can't support it with with the statute or the status that we're at right now.
Okay. A couple, a couple of thoughts that I'll, well, okay, Mayor Protem will let you go first.
Thank you, Mayor, and I respect everybody's perspective, of course. But if I could, I'd like to give a personal and practical perspective, more as a 45-year resident of the Northwest Tiffa. I've been here longer than a lot of people listening in tonight have been born. I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of good, seen a lot of bad, mostly good. Great things are happening in the Northwest sector. I can recall back in 2008 during the recession, single home values here were 40 to $60,000. Just what, 12 years later, they're looking at $250,000. And that's not by accident. That's a lot of work by a lot of people. Like, continuous challenge here in Northwest sector is the issue of blights for a lot of different reasons, the housing stock, some landlords, streets getting bad, whatever. Ongoing battle, it'll continue to be a battle. But to me, blight is the biggest challenge and always will. And in that nature, I would encourage everybody, if they haven't, to go up to Mac between Maryland and Wayburn, the site of the proposed facility. Some people know I refer to it as the block of blights. It's an entire block. All the businesses are empty. You have the Old Brudon's Bakery. It's been empty for eight years. Now, we have a whole block of blight up there, and that certainly is not in the best interest of the business district or the residential district. Now we have a window of opportunity to make that change, to put up a nice facility. And Ball insisted that facility be nice architecturally-wise and also sensitive to the residents on Wayburn and Maryland. So to me, it is a win-win. It also gives an opportunity for us to to relocate the current building, which needs to be replaced. So I'm completely comfortable and applaud efforts to get this done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let me make a couple of comments, if I will. First of all, I'd like, I agree with the the comments that we have a current master plan, have had one for a long time. The fact that we rejected the amendment doesn't negate the fact that we have a master plan to work under. So and the fact that it, as councilmember Granow points out, does support finding a new place for our public service facility, I think, is is an important point. It doesn't stop, you know, it doesn't certainly doesn't negate the importance of moving ahead with an upgrade to that proposed master plan, which we will be addressing in the next meet, in the next meeting in looking at consultants to help us. The the comment about the budgets, it is true, in the current budget, the the bond service would be roughly, you know, I think that a third was used. I don't know the exact percentage, but that's in the ballpark. That would leave certainly two-thirds for for other activities and upgrades and many of the things that we just talked about that can and should be pursued. The other interesting perspective, I think, is that this is a district that has, in fact, experienced a great recovery in terms of assessed value. And therefore, the tax capture from this district has continued to go up and actually exceeded earlier projections that were done by through the Tifa. And that is really a tribute to the success so far of reinvestment in the community, much of it through spurred on, or at least a catalyst, through investment of Tifa funds. I believe that the budget is secure going forward, not only because of these solid valuations, but also because of the way that our taxation works. There is quite a spread between assessed value and taxable value in our city in order to for us to have been in compliance with Headley. And apart the city, it's something on the order of 30%. So I would expect that we'll continue to have the opportunity to to capture solid property tax revenue for the city and specifically for the Tifa. And then as it relates to the to the amended plan, yes, the amended plan, it was the, we did have a, we did have a Tifa development plan in place. And in fact, it would have, at least in principle, allowed for this DPW project. It was a recommendation, recommendation of our council at Bodman that we strengthen that particular aspect of it. This was intended to do, the the update was intended to be responsive to that one request. Some of the points that have been raised indicate that there may be an appetite to do a broader look at at the Tifa plan as it exists and perhaps tune it up in other areas. I don't think that adopting this plan prevents us from initiating that process in the least. This would enable an important project for the city, but we also could then initiate a process if we wish, and the Tifa board agreed, because they need to initiate it, to do, to invest in, much like we're investing for the city in, you know, in a a plan that meets some of the some of the concerns that were that were raised. But I don't think that that prevents us from from working on this. And then one final thing before I yield the floor to the next comment is there the, there was a question brought up about the analysis of the possible DPW sites. And I'd like the city manager to clarify that. That was one of the conditions that we do that analysis. It has been reported at council before. You're right, we don't have a physical document before us, but I know that the city manager has seen the document and could probably make that available shortly. City manager?
Yes, Mayor Danner, I can make that document available. And that was, you know, as this process moves forward, you know, this, you know, discussion will go towards the planning commission, and that was going to be one of the documents that'll be included as part of their site reviewing the other areas within the city. But yes, I could make that document available.
Yeah, that's a good point. That that is a relevant document as a, at the planning commission level, probably more so that at the financing level, this is focused primarily on on enabling financing. Okay. With that, further discussion, somebody had their hand up. Both councilmember Reed and councilmember Fluid had their hands up. Councilmember Reed was trying to put her, had her hand up when I was almost finished, so I think I'm going to go there first.
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor. Thank you for your comments, and I hope you're 100% right. I hope that property values do go up and that, as a city, we weather this storm without missing a beat. I'm not convinced that that's going to be the reality. And I go back to my comments from the May 11th meeting, that time is not of the essence. And I really, you know, I, maybe I'm more cautious than you, but I, time's not of the essence here. Not much is going to change if we wait till post-COVID to see what our tax base looks like, to see what the economy looks like, what unemployment looks like. So those are some real concerns that I think, you know, most of the people I know have.
Okay, I can come back and respond to that, but I think there were other comments.
It's not really, I mean, you don't.
No, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that you said about the timing. It triggered a thought that I haven't, that's not on the table now. And then a clarification about the tax base. But before I do that, councilmember Fluid had something.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is regarding the report from OHM. I wanted to ask the city manager if, when they were reviewing the space that we have around the city, did they, were they able to look at the $4.5 million of city-owned properties that we have? Because I'm wondering if any of those would have played into available space that could be utilized for this project. Were they able to look at that property list?
No, not specifically to that, because for the amount of space that the DPW facility is needed, you know, the current sites within the park include its current Patterson Park, which would actually eat into along Essex, and a portion of the north parking lot of Windmill Point Park and the area of the proposed DPW. So all those sites are allow for between, you know, they were proposed anywhere from 14,000 to 18,000 square feet. There were no other areas within the park that would be able to fit that site.
Okay, all right, thank you. My other point is to return to what councilmember Reed was saying. I think it was a good example where she said, you know, we'll add more parking over four years at the cost of, and I don't have that right in front of me, at the cost of $4 million, or however it was laid out. That's exactly what I'm talking about, when I think that there needs to be more detail. We have these very broad terms. We're going to spend this amount over this period of years on parking. And that doesn't really define where it's going to be or what we feel the need is, or what kind of studies have been done. If you guys can flip back to your minutes really quickly, the minutes for May 7, if you look at page three in those minutes, if you still have them near to hand, just the way that budget is laid out on page three where everything is, and granted, this is a budget, it's not a Tifa plan. But the items on that page are just very specific, and they're laid out in a very detailed fashion. And it's just kind of an example of what I'm talking about when I say I'd like to see specific numbers and specific. And the broad plans are fine, too, but I but I think there there needs to be more detail. The the final point that I wanted to make is, I wanted to ask the city manager again, are we exploring becoming a redevelopment-ready community?
Yes, yes, that is something we are looking into. I think that'd be very important. And that's something, you know, I've I've talked with our assistant to the city manager, Leah Smith, in obtaining. So yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree. That's important. That would make some grants available to us that I'm sure we could put to good use. But I think to prepare ourselves for that kind of thing, we need these detailed plans. We need, I'm going to say aspirational again, it's a word I got from councilmember Hodges. I like that word. We need those aspirational ideas, and we need to set that bar high for our planning as we go forward into the next several years. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to come back, look back to some of the things that councilmember Reed just said to to clarify that. The the point that we don't really know how this, it's all going to settle out with COVID is true. Nobody knows how it's all going to settle out, settle out. The revenues, the tax, the property tax revenues in the city, though, are a bit easier to predict than almost for the most of the other aspects. And the reason for that is because of that 30% plus cushion, if you will, between assessed and taxable values. So the city and the economy would have to take a pretty big hit for us to exceed that 30% cushion before we start to see a problem with our property tax revenues. That's not to say that it couldn't happen, but the probabilities are, it would take a pretty, pretty big hit for that to happen. That would exceed even what what settled out in terms of the 2008 recession, where there was a big hit to to property values. The the hit to property taxes did not come anywhere near the 30% cushion that we currently have. And that was a, that was a pretty big economic. The other point I wanted to clarify, ask for clarification, is the time of the essence comment. One of the reasons the time should be considered of the essence, I think, gets back to our current DPW facility, its condition, and the deferred maintenance. And the discussion that happened at the Public Service Committee last week about the operational advantages and need associated with with a new purpose-built facility. And I don't know if the administration or councilmember Granow want to comment on that. But I think that the the timing issue really relates a lot to that that need of city operations to to be upgraded.
So I can make a couple of quick comments. I know at our public service meeting, I touched upon, the building is about 100 years old. It was a car dealership bump shop. DPW has never had a proper facility built for the DPW building. I'm trying to see if I have in my notes with me, but I know specifically tuck pointing needs to be done, roofing, siding, you have water leaking within the offices, proper ventilation for the trucks able to get out of the building and start up. So those are some areas, I can't find it right now, of that need to be fixed. Certainly, the parking lot, the actual ingress egress of the vehicles, being able to get out of the building consistently. DPW has to line up their vehicles and kind of play a little game of trying to move their vehicles all around just to be able to get out. That does present a challenge to them. So those are areas that certainly need to be addressed, you know, if the DPW were to stay longer in this building.
Okay, other discussion. Councilmember Rollin?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we describe the director role of the the Tifa currently and what the plan is moving forward? I know you're interim director, right, Nick?
Yeah, the way that, yeah, Nick can comment as, well, we don't have a a named director per se, but I think our our city attorney can comment on this as per the statute. But the way that the, as I understand, the way the statute is is structured, that the city manager has oversight responsibility on Tifa. And if you look at the way we operated before the retirement of our last city manager, the city manager did take, did take on the responsibilities of administrative support, effectively what you would think of as the director functions for DDA and Tifa. And the plan was that with the addition of administrative function, that is the assistant to city manager, that there be capacity in our administration to go back to that model of the city manager taking, taking the lead with the support of the assistant city manager so that that, so that 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 function falls directly under the, essentially, under the influence of council. And we felt that that would be a more cost-effective way to go forward and a management way in terms of integrating with the city.
So council will have oversight of Tifa, is what you're saying?
Yeah, council, through their, through council's oversight of the city manager and city manager's responsibility for Tifa, that effectively gives council greater oversight, a little bit greater oversight than through the director role.
So can I, can I ask, since this is going to city council meetings for a couple of years, I've never heard any Tifa reports made at city council. I'm wondering if we can integrate that into our monthly, monthly meetings, a Tifa, a Tifa update, since we're spending so much money? Is that possible to do?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't, we can't do that.
Yeah. That'll help us understand where money is being spent, you know, honorably and and, you know, and if we have to amend anything and need, something needs more. and, you know, and if we have to amend anything and need, something needs more money, we'll be able to jump on it right away with a monthly update. The second thing I wanted to bring up was, Mayor, you, you said that this, this amendment is inadequate and it needs some touching up still. I'm wondering why we're pushing forward when it's not.
I don't think I said that. I think you just put words in my mouth.
I think you said it needed some fine tuning in areas.
I don't think I said that.
Okay. What you, you said it wasn't up to the highest standards and you, you said we could move forward and tweak these areas later. I know, I know.
No, I said that if the council and Tifa was interested in doing a more comprehensive redo of the development plan, that that would be something that could be pursued to address some of the, some of the questions that, that were raised by Councilmember Fluid and Councilmember Reed. I think the plan is fine as, as it is and serves our purposes, but if there's an appetite for investing in, in a, in a redo of the plan, much like we're exploring for the master plan, then that could be pursued in the future. And it doesn't negate, you know, our existing plan or our ability to use the Tifa plan and the Tifa tax recapture for the purposes of this project.
Okay. And then back to the numbers where I said it was a third of our budget for the new DPW. It, it was actually closer to a half, but we added a bunch of money from surplus from last year, right? So what's.
No, I don't think that's, that's quite right. I think it is actually closer to a third.
I thought our budget was about 860 and then we added about.
Yeah, when we added, when we added the money to, when we added that money from surplus to the budget, it fell to more like 20 to 25%.
Yeah, but I'm saying originally the year, the year outlook, before we added the money we didn't spend last year that we were supposed to.
That's correct. That's what I was just, that was what I was responding to. The, the budget, if you do the, if you do the percent, percentage calculation without the surplus appropriation, you get the, you get a number that's pretty close to a third. If you do it with the surplus appropriation, it comes out closer to 20 to 25%.
It's 38%.
38%.
38%. Okay, thank you. Somebody did the calculation.
Is there a, what's our estimated budget for '21, '22? Is it, is it not going to have a surplus? Yeah, it's not going to have a surplus. So we're going back to about $800,000 then, correct? Hopefully.
If I might, if I might add something, the current budget for the proposed 2021 year, our anticipated tax revenue based on our value is 933,000.
Okay.
And the budgeted amount for the, that's the number you're looking for?
I think so.
And then you added the surplus in to put it over 1.2 million or 1.1 million. So I'm wondering.
395 was adding that, but the budget, but the budget revenue is 933,000 and the budget amount for the principal and interest is 325.
Okay.
So it's about a third.
If we're not going to take surplus next year, we're going to go back to that original tax revenue money, then that, the jolt from the DPW investment is really going to hit us even harder in two years. And then again, our economy was doing so well. I think that's why our property values went up and the tax revenue was so high. This COVID is really taking a hit on the economy. And I'm wondering why we're rushing into this without waiting to see what COVID's going to, what it's really going to do. There's, there's talks about a second, a second spike coming through. Working at a hospital, I hear about this. We're doing really good right now here in Michigan because of our precautions we took. But I'm, I'm, I'm on the slower, slow and steady wins the race rather than jumping into something is kind of where I'm trying to go to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we already discussed it. Councilmember Hodges, you, you had your hand up a little earlier.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Denner. I just wanted to express a few thoughts. I hear all the concerns and the thoughts about how we can be and do better. A lot of great work has been researched and shared by our community members. I think we're incredibly fortunate to have so much talent here. In fact, I really want to call out some of those folks, Mary Rollo, Brian Bosberg, Tim Kohler, Wendy Reland, Christine Raider and others. You're really, really good. And I have a planning background myself, so I say that knowingly and with the same desire. I want the best master plan too. I want full compliance at all times. I want a robust development plan. I want to schedule the meetings well in advance. I want frequent surveying of our community, RFPs to inform decision-making and more. And I'm confident we will get there. Right now, we're in the midst of significant change and from it comes turbulence. And in fact, as a result of a recent meeting, I have submitted a change management strategy to the mayor and to the city manager as directed. But I do believe that that change management needs to be co-created amongst all of us. So I don't see that as anything definitive, but just a starting point. But for now, that change needs to be effectively managed wisely and carefully and so that we can evolve. And we must build from the past and repair it where necessary and enable a strong and vital future that reflects the change this community wants. So when preparing for tonight, these considerations are at the forefront for me. And I'm grateful for this minute to explain, hoping it leads to some understanding. First, I looked at the past and in particular, I was trying to find measures that were impervious to politics and truly objective. And from that, I noted that there, and I've said this before, we have a double A minus bond rating, which is about the best you can get given heavily restriction. We have 20% fund balance. That's up from 2% during the recession. And we have clean audits. We're top, we're at the top of our class in each of these measures and my hat is off to those folks who preceded us and making that a reality. So again, those are objective measures that are impervious to politics and therefore I think very important. Looking at the present, we have a new administrative team, both in our city manager and city attorney. And I believe our city manager understands for the need, the need for International City Management Association quality leadership and that he's committed himself to that. I find comfort in that and think processes and things are going to be smoother in the future because of that. And we need to empower and support him and our staff. We can't micromanage it. And we must operate honoring that whole council-manager form of government. We have a new city council that has already led measurable change in its short life with more to come. A new master plan is coming and I see that as a turning point opportunity for this community to work together and to build trust. We have residents and businesses seated on our Tax Increment Financing Authority Board, and I want to honor and respect the work that they've done. It's also important, I think, to note that we have capacity issues as a community. Coming to the city council, I was surprised to learn we don't have a professional planning staff. And I really hope that that changes in the future. This city does a lot with a little. And I've learned we value engineer our projects, which means we don't check every box, but we check the most important ones. This city council approved the DPW project in December. And ultimately, our staff team has made their case and their recommendation with the following key highlights that I find significant. One, there is risk in exposure in the fact that we have a current facility that puts our employees at risk. Two, the staff has evaluated highest and best use considerations. And I will tell you, I was a skeptic coming into this and still feel some skepticism, but to find that this project actually does have highest and best use potential is significant to me. And that comes not only from the OHM work that was done, but in my conversations with highly regarded professionals in their field that reside in this community. The staff has worked with the Tifa board and its resident and business owners that sit on that board. They've consulted with fellow growth points to learn some best practices and to determine whether or not there's opportunity to collaborate and reduce costs or find other solutions. They've put the body itself into compliance, which is important. And they've successfully answered many questions that have arisen in recent days and in recent hours. For example, construction costs for projects requiring mid-sized firms are more affordable now than what might meet the eye. The timing of the steps, including when the planning commission addresses this matter, construction costs are known, et cetera, are all within an acceptable boundary. The master plan concerns have been resolved and addressed and we're at least legally in compliance there. We've shifted money to support the business community. We've addressed the zoning concerns that came up in recent hours. And further, I see this as an opportunity to leverage other taxing jurisdiction, other taxing jurisdictions. Other solutions would likely be more expensive and would pull from our general fund. So because of this, this is a cost-effective strategy. Unlike a voter-approved bond, which has been mentioned recently, which requires new taxes, and Tifa money is not discretionary, so it can't easily be directed to other city needs. And as another point of comfort for me at least, the 1985 projections in the original plan for capture were much lower than actual. Despite going through a recession, those numbers still came in much higher than projected, which I think suggests this community will stand strong in COVID. And that's not a naive statement. I know there's a risk there, but there is some comfort in knowing that we also went through a recession and exceeded projections. Is everything perfect and is it exactly as I would have executed it? No. But it is reasonable and all of the most important boxes, in my opinion, have been checked. So it's my sincere hope this community can respect that position and the thinking that has gone into this, because this has been a very difficult time. I, I know what is riding on this decision, but it's what I believe in and it's, it's what I'm committed to. So I intend to vote in favor of the development plan tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hodges. Councilmember Relon?
Just, just one thing. Councilmember Hodges, you mentioned that the Tifa money can't be redirected to other city needs, where that's exactly what's happening with this. The $375,000 is being directed to the entire city's needs, not just the Tifa district. And that's, that, that's a pretty big deal. And that's what I've been mentioning constantly is, that, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Fluid?
I just, I think it's very important that our residents understand, because I know a lot of them are confused about this. As has already been said, we voted unanimously in December for a new DPW facility. That is not in question. But a lot of our residents are confused about the difference between approval for the DPW facility, which again, has already happened, and approval for this amended plan. So as I mentioned earlier, when we were approving the minutes, most of the emails that I received were regarding the DPW facility, either for or against. And to every one of those, I responded and said, that's not actually what we're voting on. We are voting on this plan. The DPW is only a part of the plan. The plan should encompass much more. It, it's a blueprint for the entire district. So I just wanted to say that hopefully that will clarify some things for, for some residents. The other thing I wanted to say is that apparently our DPW has needed work for some time. And it didn't become an urgent issue to relocate it until we wanted to put the art center on that piece of land. So if our employees are working in unsafe conditions, we need to rectify that right now. And it has no bearing on, on the art center. When I voted to relocate the DPW, it was because I believed that they needed and deserved a safe and comfortable facility. Absolutely. Totally on board with that. I'm sure everyone else is too. But the urgency of the DPW, as I just said, it appears to be time is of the essence now because we want to get that art center built. And I think these are two completely separate issues. If our employees are working in unsafe conditions, then we can't wait eight months or 10 months or however long it's going to take to build this new facility. That needs to be addressed immediately if possible. So hopefully I, I've separated to me, those are two entirely separate issues. I don't think they're being voted on by everyone as two entirely separate issues. I think a lot of people are lumping them together and that's where some of the, of the trouble is happening.
Thank you. I think we've gotten a lot of comment and discussion out on the floor and I think we know where everybody's had a chance to express their, their views and opinions and questions. So I think it's appropriate that we call the question at this point. So I would like to call the question and Clerk Clayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Rayland?
No.
Reed?
No.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
No.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Motion passes. The amendment has been approved. Thank you for, for a spirited discussion. To the next item of business, which is related to the one that we just discussed and, and it is the approval of a resolution to put the full faith and credit of the City Gross Point Park behind the future issuance of a bond by the Northwest Tax Increment Finance Authority for the purposes of the DPW as we just, just discussed. A couple of thoughts that I'd like to make in terms of introduction, some are, are the same that I made before the last item and that process going forward, strictly looking at financing, is that this is the next step in supporting the financing process consistent with the condition that this council placed on the project of Tifa being able to support the financing of the, of the new facility. The, the, so this will allow the, the Tifa, Tifa Board at the appropriate time to actually issue the bond. So what has to happen before they can actually issue the bond? There, there are a few things that will unfold over the next few weeks. One is that the, the bid process for construction will be completed. That will inform the details of the bond resolution that is ultimately responsibility of the board to approve for issuance. Then there has to be the actual sale of the bond, which would be conducted through our bond consultant, Ben Ziski Company. Now, a couple of concerns that I wanted to clarify going into the discussion. One was about cost. We did have at the time in December that we approved it, a cost estimate that informed our, our budget of $1 million. Based on the architectural work that's been done, the administration architect obtained a recent estimate of construction cost prepared by the, the firm, I think it's AppCor. And they, they have given us a cost number that city manager can tell us what exactly it was. It's well within the expectations and budget. Also, Ben Ziski Company, as recently as last week, about the, the market for such a bond and does this make sense at this time. He believes that there will be a market to support issuance of the bond. He thinks that our rate will be favorable, partly due to the excellent credit rating of Gross Point Park, assuming we pass the full faith and credit resolution that's before you. As Councilmember Hodges noted in the last discussion, a bond rating as a city is double A minus. The actual funds, as Councilmember Relon pointed out, are coming through the Tifa tax recapture. So this, this resolution is a step in that process. And to get the ball rolling, I will put a motion on the floor. We adopt a resolution approving full faith and credit bonds for the payment of the tax increment bonds issued by the Gross Point Park Northwest Tax Increment Finance. Is there support?
All support.
Mayor Pro Tim Robson supports. Discussion.
Can you, can you speak to, or can the city manager give some more details about what you were saying about this estimate from AppCor?
Yes, Councilmember Fluid. So the estimate from AppCor, as discussed during our Public Service Committee meeting, the current architectural cost with the DPW would be about $3.2 million and built into that is 15% contingency.
Okay. Because what's on the city website is an estimate, not the full estimate, but just the figure from CBRE of around 3.7. So I haven't seen any of these bids. I don't know if anyone else here has seen them. I know when we voted in December to move forward with a new DPW facility, that what was given to us as estimates were email exchanges that were very vague that said, you know, sure, I can do that for around this much money. They were not itemized bids. So are we going now with the one from AppCor or the one from CBRE? And do we have very itemized formal details, detailed bids that, okay, so the city manager is nodding his head. So you've seen these, but.
I, I do have an, oh, sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Fluid, I do have an itemized list from AppCor with details of the 3.2 million.
Okay. But as of right now. Okay, but as of right now, as we already discussed in the public service meeting last week, we have not put out an RFP. So we have one bid, is that correct?
This is just an estimate. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I was gonna say the same thing you were gonna say. It's not a construction bid per se. Go ahead.
This is just an estimate at this time. As soon as we move forth with the process, you know, that the architect is finished and we go before the planning commission, they will seek out an RFP and go out for bids from construction companies with those final costs.
Yeah, to clarify too, the final costs come from actual construction company bids. What AppCor is, is a professional firm that provides informed estimates for construction projects. In fact, for example, this was the same firm that we used to provide informed estimates to support the issuance of the bond for the city hall. And now we're proceeding with the details of that going forward. So it's an informed estimate based on the work of the architect and the current designs, as opposed to the outline of the concept, which was what CBRE, outline of the concept, the site and the square footage, which was all that CBRE had to work with back in December. So this is informed by much more detailed information. But it is not a construction bid. The construction bid comes as a later step in the process. This is an important step in the process to inform the budgeting and planning for the project. The other thing I'd add on the numbers is that the construction bid that's been presented is almost apples to apples with what CBRE gave us, but not quite. And the CBRE also included some costs for things like new equipment, which is not included in the AppCor cost, but is likely to be included in the final bonding. And will be part of those costs that are put together for the bond. Which is why you look at the numbers, and this allows for the same upward limit of 4 million that we approved in December. And the architect, the administration, and AppCor are all comfortable that we should be able to do it within that budget. So that's a little...
But does that, well, sorry, does that... Some of the things we had touched on in the public service meeting were, the city manager had mentioned rainwater capture. Of course, I'm interested in some sustainability initiatives. But none of those have been built into this as of yet, because we're at the beginning stages, correct? So as we move...
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so as we move forward, between now and taking this to planning commission, this project and the blueprints and the drawings are going to get much more detailed, but...
That's correct.
Okay, but it is absolutely going to planning commission, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
Just to be clear, this resolution is, that's on the table, the motion that's on the table, is for the city to pledge its full faith and credit to back the bonds, correct? We're not really talking about the construction estimates.
Correct.
Okay, so what's, the resolution that's been presented to us says, in essence, if Tifa cannot make the bond payments, the city is backing those with its full faith and credit, its budget, its money, correct?
That is, the city attorney can comment on that, but legally, that is what this accomplishes. It also supports the fact that we are willing to put our full faith and credit behind it. In talking to our bond consultant, Ben Ziskin Company, it does enable a much more favorable and deeper market for the bonds, so that the credit rating, the season's credit rating comes into play, all kinds of things. But you are...
I was just clarifying that we're not talking about how much this is going to cost or what estimates are. We're talking about, we're backing this with the city's full faith and credit.
That is correct.
That's what this resolution is.
That's correct. Councilmember Granow?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilman, or Councilmember Reed's clarification on that. I just want to point out that, I know it's not necessarily germane, but the construction estimate, which came up in the Public Service Commission of 3.2 million, we are interested in the green initiatives that, Councilmember Fluid is champion of a green roof and rainwater capture and stuff. Other, that leaves $800,000 to incorporate all those green initiatives under the current bond as it's set up. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong about this, that the Tifa has, not necessarily liquid, but assets of $4 million. I don't believe that they are gonna default on this, plus they have annual revenues of close to $1 million. However, I would also note that the critics of using Tifa to finance this want the city to pay for the DPW, because it's a benefit to the whole city. In which case, the full faith and credit of the whole city would again be on the hook for this garage. So we're no, it seems to me that we should all be in support of this, because that's how, even the people who are critical of using the Tifa, want the full faith and credit of the city to be paying for this.
Right. And also, you know, to point out about this mechanism of financing, because it uses Tifa tax recapture, over half of the tax recapture is our taxes that would go to other taxing authorities. So it's actually a pretty cost efficient way to make a significant improvement. Other discussion. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification too, the Tifa would have the authority to issue these bonds at this point without the full faith and credit, right? The compromise would just be that it would be a less favorable bond market, and the cost to taxpayers would be higher without the full faith and credit.
That's my understanding from talking to the bond consultant. Said Tifas have issued bonds on their own without full faith and credit. The market is thin. He wouldn't recommend it. And for all the reasons you just mentioned.
And then one other question, just from a timing standpoint. I believe the Tifa has 16 years before it sunsets. This is a 15-year payback. So there is some urgency to the timing to make sure we do it within that timeframe. But is it wise at all to check more boxes and delay this decision until next month and really solidify it? Or are we best to move forward and consider this tonight? What would your, the recommendation of yourself and city manager and attorney be on that front?
My recommendation is to move forward, because it's an important step in the process. But city manager and attorney, I think, should weigh in based on the answer of the councilmember's question.
My recommendation, Councilmember Hodges, would be to move forward.
Thank you.
In my recommendation, just strictly from a legal standpoint, would be there's no impediment to moving forward now. And for all the reasons cited about, you know, the favorable terms, and even the ability to get a bond in general, I think, you know, the full faith and credit resolution is fairly standard for this type of project.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed, your hand up.
Well, if we approve this full faith and credit, do we, do we as a council give up our ability to issue the bond then? It's in the hands, right?
This provides full faith and credit for Tifa to issue it. If for whatever reason, we move ahead with the project, and Tifa doesn't issue the bond, and we decide to go out to the taxpayers and ask for a tax increase to pay for the bond, we can do that. There's nothing that this doesn't preclude that.
What I'm asking is, and maybe it's better for the city attorney or the city manager, if we back this with the full faith and credit, the Tifa Board moves forward. It doesn't come back to council. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of that question?
If we back this with the full faith and credit of the city, the Tifa Board goes forward with the bond. It doesn't come back to council. Is that correct?
For purposes of the bond issuance, my understanding, it does not need to come back to council.
So would it make more sense to know the construction cost, to have the bid, since they're not even at that step, before we decide to back it with our full faith and credit? I don't really see the urgency of pushing this forward tonight.
Well, we have limited our exposure by the amount not to exceed 4 million, which is the same amount that we voted on in December. And all our estimates say that we should be well within. If for some reason, the estimates turn out to push the project over 4 million, then this obviously doesn't apply. So I think that that, we're protected as a city from that standpoint. Councilmember Rollin?
So we've reached out to, or actually, I've reached out to a lot of experts. Councilmember Hodges mentioned them earlier. I think Councilmember Reed mentioned a few of them that are really experts in this field, and none of them are saying that construction costs are going down during COVID. I really think the bid process needs to be done first to get that actual estimate and what we need. And then really to get approval from the DPW staff itself. There was rumblings that they didn't think it had everything they needed as well. And just to get that final cost before we move forward with this. I think one month will help us do that, and it may, I don't think our next meeting is till under July, so it gives us about six weeks.
The next meeting is the second Monday in July.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, so that gives us four weeks then. But that still gives us a little more time to get this, to really get a good estimate on what this process, and we haven't even seen it. It would be nice to see what this estimate is entailing. I haven't seen anything on any estimates. So for me to vote yes on this, that's a blind vote. I don't think the residents want me voting blindly without really knowing what's in this estimate that they say is 3.2 million. I have an architect as a wife, so I know that I have different information coming into me that I consider her an expert, as well as a lot of close friends here that are in the architectural market and real estate markets, that don't think this is a valid estimate at even 4 million to build this building. So I'm hoping to see what this estimate is before I can actually vote yes. Thank you.
My understanding, by the way, is that AppCor considered current market conditions. But at any rate, Councilmember Granow?
To answer a few of those concerns, at the Public Service Commission, we had Director Thomas, Pat Thomas, the director of DPW there. He seemed very enthusiastic about this building. In your packet, and I was gonna show this in my committee report, there are the preliminary architectural plans for the building, which shows where the bays are, the office, the... There was a few tweaks of, can we try to add a door here? Can we do this there? But the overall plan that the architects have drawn up is in your packet for you to review. And the DPW people were very excited. As Nick was mentioning, the current building, there's not room to turn around in, so they are jockeying cars by backing up, or trucks by backing up, and trying to do stuff. This building has drive-through capability, drive-around capability. The staff was very excited about that. A lot of the materials we stored in Gross Point Park are able to be stored behind a wall that the residents will no longer have to see. A lot of the things the DPW was asking for, an inside washing bay so they can wash the cars inside in the winter. This, a lot of the OSHA and my OSHA requirements now for garages, we are kind of grandfathered in the current facility, but this puts us in state-of-the-art safety for our employees. I think the DPW employees were engaged, at least at the director level, of what the DPW people need and were included in the architecture. And if I'm wrong in that, it has the city manager to correct me.
Just to comment a little bit, Councilmember Granow. So as part of the OHM studies that were done, looking at the current areas within the city, there was also programming done. So this actually was an inventory of vehicles and equipment within the city that the DPW uses. What would be equipment that would transfer over to the current facility? And OHM as well took a couple of our DPW staff on tours to other DPW facilities in the state. And they also have interviewed our DPW employees, asking them what's needed at this time. I know for our city and myself, it's extremely important that we have a facility that is set up for them now, but for in the future, especially where needs may be different, and/or departments and/or services that are supplied, whether that's still done by the city or it's contracted out. Those are things that we looked into, you know, and talked with our employees of looking, what do you need now? And what do you think the current DPW, the future DPW will need?
No, that's good to know. That's good to know. One other question is, what did we pay AppCor for that estimate?
I do not have a number for you on that.
But we did...
I do not know the number.
Okay, so we did have, we have spent money on that, that should have been done from the construction company that would have put a bid out for us, correct? If we would have done it our, if we would have waited, if we wait until the construction bids go out to get the actual price, we wouldn't have had to pay for this estimate, correct?
No, this...
Right?
No.
Shouldn't have had to pay AppCor for anything. We should have got this bid from the actual construction companies that are bidding to work for us. There should be more than one bid. We should be getting bids coming in and saying, hey, I can do it for this with this. I can do it for this with this. Instead of just getting, paying someone for an estimate now.
City manager, can you respond to that?
So, yes, so what we wanted to do is show at its current estimate, the current architectural drawing, what its cost would be. And as you did state, you know, as soon as the final architectural drawings are done, we will then go out for bid, and you'll have, you know, your three or four proposals for construction estimates.
And then what's the date, what do you think the estimated date will be of those?
I know I discussed that our, I hope to have, you know, I think we're looking to have a planning commission meeting, maybe in July, potentially, that would have these estimates. You know, it could be three weeks, could be four. That's my best guess at this time. Could be longer.
All right, so we don't have that timeline, but we're pushing forward on this without having a timeline on getting the actual costs. That's another concern of mine as well. Thanks for your answer, Mayor. Thanks, Dan.
Councilmember Hodges, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did have a resident reach out with concern about screening issues and not wanting that area to feel like a dumping ground, to quote. Is it possible that staff could just speak for a moment to opportunities for input from the community? And then any remedies that you have been deploying to ensure that it's an asset to the neighborhood?
Yes, so one of the things I know that we discussed at our December meeting was for the site plan to allow a neighborhood buffer space, privacy wall around the yard, and additional screening. Within the architectural drawing you just saw, you only, had just seen the building, we have asked that, once the new drawing is available, we do have, you know, a brick, you know, we've discussed, I actually haven't, you know, whether it's a brick wall, rhydiron fencing, arborvitae, and there's screenage on the Wayburn side, also over on, you know, Maryland, possibly some screening there and towards the alley. In addition of receiving, you know, concerns and/or comments from residents, what I would like to do before our next planning commission meeting is have further outreach with residents in the area, especially, you know, regarding their comments or what they'd like to see with the building. One of the important things for me, I know, and I've heard over the years, is, you know, we do have upgraded lighting, you know, in other areas of our city. And potentially, at times, that lighting can be intrusive to neighbors and residents. And so those are things that we're also looking to as well, that we need to make sure that we're not blinding a neighbor, you know, having our lights in our yard. And we will continue those efforts to reach out and find what's best.
Yeah, just to further amplify that, Councilmember Hodges, these are the sorts of details and discussions that will be developed and discussed in the planning commission meeting, which is a public meeting, and solicit for a comment at that meeting as well. And also to clarify, the discussion that we're having at this time is about the step in the financing process, but not really, not the design process per se. The design process is running in parallel with this, that will then support that discussion with the planning commission. Other discussion. Seeing none, I think it's time to call the question. Clerk Clayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Granow?
Yes.
Raylan?
No.
Reed?
No.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Louis?
No.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. It's about 12 after 9:00. We still got to have quite a bit on our agenda. It would be, council will be interested in a short recess.
Yes.
I thought I might get agreement on that. 12 after, let's take about 10 minutes. Let's reconvene at 9:25.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Like our city attorney. There momentarily.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't know if you can hear, my video froze.
Okay, you can't, we can't hear you and there you are. Okay, I bet, I'd like us council to unmute. Did each unmute your audio? Okay. We're, I would, those meeting back in session. Next item on the agenda is the Human Rights Ordinance. It's recommended to the council by the Ordinance Review Committee. I'd like Councilmember Grano to share the ordinance review. To.
As you all are aware, back in, I believe it was February, might have been January. Councilmember Fluit asked the city administration to sign on to the amendment to the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act through the state of Michigan, to the amendment to add more protections for LGBT community. The mayor's position was that this city routinely does not get involved in state issues. And that he would suggest we pass the Human Rights Ordinance in our own city, which included protections for all people, including LGBT. The city attorney wrote this ordinance, went to ordinance review, it passed ordinance review with full consensus. There is essentially no, there's a few spots about anti-discrimination in the city code. This is actually a pretty comprehensive anti-discrimination ordinance for us to have. It's needed and I would urge it's passed as a introduction.
Okay, you get it started. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Councilmember Fluit.
Yeah, I would like to motion that we pass ordinance number 218.
Is there support? Councilmember Reed.
Right.
Discussion. Councilmember Fluit.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out before we vote, this is actually something that the former city attorney and I had started working on almost as soon as I was elected. And so I wanted to say thank you to him for that. I think it's an important ordinance. A lot of people don't realize that there are no federal protections for LGBTQ people when it comes to discrimination. In some states, there are, there are laws that ban that type of discrimination, but Michigan, Michigan is not one of them. Which was one reason why I felt so strongly about having a city ordinance. And I also wanted to say thank you to the LGBTQ members of our community who did take a look at the ordinance and had some input before it went to ordinance review.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Really just a comment, I would like to thank Councilmember Fluit for advancing this issue. It is, I agree, it's an important issue and it's timely, not only because it's Pride Month, but because of other events that we've already discussed. So I think it's time for us as a city to have this type of ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the, the city attorney, past and present, as well as the ordinance review committee and Councilmember Fluit for helping us with the community input. I agree that this is an important ordinance for us to have. It's something that we can manage within our, within our city and send a clear message about what the policies are of our city as it relates to human rights. So I am fully in support of this ordinance and the work that was done to develop it. Any other discussion? Councilmember Relon.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Councilmember Fluit and both city attorneys for getting this out there. It is very important to, to every, it should be important to everyone. I think we all have friends in our community that feel, I don't know if they're repressed or oppressed for different reasons. And we'll get into that later on as well, but this is a good first step for us to show exactly how Rose Point Park has changed. We're no longer, I'm not going to say it, we were changing, we're changing a lot and it's really nice to see. And I appreciate all the work that's been put on this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else before we call the question? Councilmember Hodges.
Just to reiterate that support, it feels sort of historic and momentous to be part of this significant moment. And I'm grateful for the opportunity and enthusiastic support of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, with that, let's call the question. I think I know it's gonna, how it's gonna come out. Clerk Playhat, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano.
Yes.
Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. I agree, this is a good, is a good step for our community, an important step. I don't think it's been openly noticed by, in our community. At least I hope it isn't. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of Pride Month proclamation. In our discussion about flags at the last meeting, one of the suggestions that Councilmember Grano made was that we, we could, should and should pursue a proclamation as a city designating Pride Month. As was noted, June is, is Pride Month. And, and this would make it official as, as a position of Rose Point Park in terms of this proclamation. You have a proclamation before you, it's got a lot of whereas in it, so you know that the city attorney wrote it with input from others. So is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Is there support? Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Councilmember Fluit.
I'm very excited about this as well, obviously. I want to thank the current city attorney for the work that he did on this. But I would like to make two small edits, which are, instead of gay Pride Month, it should, it should be LGBTQ Pride Month. That's at the top of the resolution and then it's also in the last paragraph. LGBTQ is, I think, the preferred term and it's also much more inclusive.
Okay. The, I think Councilmember Grano, you moved it. Do you accept that?
Yes, that's, I accept that.
Well, Councilmember Hodges, you seconded. Do you support that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll consider the motion to be as, as amended or as changed at the suggestion of Councilmember Fluit. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, this is another edit. I had an exchange with our city attorney this afternoon. Because of my research on several of these topics and, and in comments from some residents. There, this, the ordinance says in the, in the second to last, and I'm sorry, the proclamation in the second to last paragraph says the federal government since the year 2000 has recognized the month. Um, and I, I think that's a little bit misleading. It's been by executive order by some presidents, not by all. So.
Do you mind, do you mind if I, really?
Yeah, well, you go ahead. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and Councilmember Reed, I did discuss this and she's correct. I actually went to the Library of Congress website and there's sort of a, kind of an intermittent history of June as what we now call, and I appreciate Councilmember Fluit's correction to this, the LGBTQ Pride Month. It was initially by proclamation of President Clinton. I think he started it and did it in 1999 and 2000. It then skipped the Bush years and then was made by proclamation every year of the Obama presidency. And then there was, I think, instead of proclamation under our current system, apparently President Trump issued, I guess, a tweet declaring it June Pride Month. And so that's sort of the intermittent history. So what I will do, you know, subject to the approval of the motioner and the seconder is, is edit that language to be, to make sure it's not confusing or misleading. And it may not have to be precisely that precise, but to clear up that it hasn't been continuous since 2000.
Okay, the motion and support, do you accept that with condition?
That's fine.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll put that on our city attorney to get that right. Councilmember Relon.
I have a question. What will this proclamation guide the city to do? How are we going to show this proclamation or is it just a document that we're signing? Is there any plans to put up flags or announcements, I should say, or on the light poles down Jefferson, down Kirchville, down Mac? We see these different kinds of flags that are on the light poles. There's any kind of indication outside of this piece of paper that we're actually inviting of this community?
My understanding is that the proclamation is the proclamation. It's a declaration of the, of the policy of the city of Rose Point Park. And that's as far as it goes.
Okay, that's, that's one, I'm very excited about as well. I'm just wondering if it gives us the ability to, to add on to that and not just have words and have actions instead. I didn't know if there's a way to, to indicate at any.
It doesn't mandate it and it doesn't preclude it. So I think that that's probably something that'll come up in the next agenda item. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just to add to that. And I, this comes from some comments from residents, as well as something that I saw, that the city of Warren lit up their city hall with color, with lights that were in the rainbow. And this is kind of a question for the city attorney. I don't know if our city manager has the authority to make those kind of decisions or because the Warren city government is not structured the same way ours is. Does, do those kinds of decisions have to come before council or is the city manager empowered to make those kinds of decisions? Without, so in other words, especially considering we're in this pandemic mode still, if the city manager decided to put up, to post the proclamation at city hall or do something else with it, does he have the power to do that? Or do we have to empower him?
I think, well, I think.
I don't think.
Go ahead. City attorney, I was going to say posting a proclamation is just publicizing what we're going to, about you, but city attorney, you had some comments.
Yeah, I would, I would say under any of the current, you know, the charter or anything I've seen. I, I'm not sure that that kind of government speech or statement, I suppose you could construe it as a government function or administrative function. I think a better course, just like I think we're about to see on the next agenda item. Given, you know, sort of the government speech issues, avoiding public, you know, government speech versus a public forum, et cetera, et cetera. It's probably better, and I think we should, and this is something I was going to bring up as part of the next agenda item. I think the council should come up with, you know, define policy for, whether it's flying a flag, lighting up a building. And my recommendation would be that council approves that. I, I think based on the law, and again, I'm sort of dipping into what we'll be getting into next. But, you know, to the extent you want to protect it as government speech, it's got to be controlled by the city. Now that, I think, would be arguably controlled by the city. You can make an argument it was government speech if it was controlled by the city manager. I think it's a much better argument, control. Again, getting ahead of myself a little bit, you know, talks about, one of the checks on government speech is the political process. And so I, I think it's more likely to be upheld and it's a stronger position for the city council as elected members to make decisions on, on things like that. So sort of going back to Councilmember Relon's comment, you know, this proclamation is just the city's official recognition of June as LGBTQ Pride Month. To the extent there, there are actions to be taken like that, my advice would be, you know, to, to address those on sort of a case-by-case or, or whatever the case might be at a high basis and have the council decide, you know, how they want to proceed or what they want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Our mayor pro tem, Robson.
For the short term, I would suggest that we could put this on the city website as information and for people to see. Could probably do that at the, at the very least. Think we need a motion or that we just.
No, I think, you know, I think public, you know, making public. Hopefully the approval, which looks to be. That makes for.
If approved by the council, I'll put it on the website.
Councilmember Grano.
Thank you, Mayor. It was my intent, there was, we had some discussion at our last meeting regarding our next issue. And it was my intent and my public comments that I've made already that I believe as council members, we represent the entire city. People that are for the flag and against the flag on city property. And so the reason I wanted a proclamation is because I felt like we don't have to get into the government speech issue while also letting all members of our community know that they are included and that their city government welcomes them as any other resident. And that the city government doesn't support any discrimination. And I felt it was a very win-win way to address this issue so that, you know, as I read the comments for the flag, for the next one, and the change.org petition that was sent to us, most of the comments were, we want people to know that they are welcomed in our community. The point of this proclamation is to make sure that is done. And so I think it specifically leaves off the flag stuff so that we can deal with that separately.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we call the question? Let's call the question. Clerk Playhat, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano.
Yes.
Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Fluit.
When we have a proclamation, doesn't someone usually read it?
Well, good point. I'll read, I'll read the proclamation since we've now.
You can leave out that second to the last paragraph if it's.
Yeah, okay, I will because it gets confusing, but I will. So it's city of Rose Point Park proclamation designated, designating June as LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas the city of Rose Point Park supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas in support of the city's commitment, a non-discrimination ordinance will be considered by the city council on June 8th, 2020, making these rights the law of the city. And whereas the city of Rose Point Park accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic and economic successes of the city of Rose Point Park. And now therefore, I'm going to skip the reference to the federal government. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Denner and the members of Rose Point Park City Council hereby proclaim June 2020 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Rose Point Park, Michigan. And encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality of the members, equality of members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. It will be dated today and signed by me.
Thank you. Thanks.
Moving along, flags on municipal property. I think I'm going to ask the city manager to introduce this. He is giving us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. I'll go over a brief summary, then I'll ask the city attorney, you know, regarding some brief comments. Currently, the city has no established policy regarding the flying of flags on municipal property. Traditionally, we've flown the city flag and US flag on city hall. However, due to the increased interest from the city council, we explored the idea of adopting a form of policy and procedure. Through research and reaching out to colleagues in the points and city administrations throughout the state, majority of communities do not have a written policy and procedure in place and just use the tradition of flying US state and city flags. However, in communities without a policy, the city may allow the decision to come forth to a council, for example, Ferndale. So with that said, upon a council decision, the city could move towards three different scenarios regarding municipal flags and setting up policies and procedures. Number one, fly the US state and city flag on municipal property. Number two, fly federally recognized, recognized observances on municipal property. Number three, council decide upon a case-by-case basis on municipal property before a city council meeting. Attached with this letter were options one and two. One was a resolution with the city of Ypsilanti, which recently just got overturned. However, that resolution called for US state and city flag within their city hall. But that language could also be used towards out on their city property. Oak Park as well was another option. Option two, they had a nice guideline for federally recognized observances and how it would be done through the city council. Option three was more of an informal, however, it could lead to, in our estimation, increased time debating the merits of a flag. And if denied by a city council, depending on the flag that's discussed, could lead to lawsuits of the city. A city does have First Amendment rights to government speech. However, the cost to litigate, you know, regarding option three may warrant the city consider this option carefully. With that said, my recommendation is asking the city council to direct myself and the administration to adopt the policy and procedures. City Attorney Hollitt, do you have any comments regarding your letter to the city council in the public?
No, I'll just I'll briefly address it. I think the memorandum speaks for itself, and I'm happy to answer any questions or get into more detail about it. Bottom line is that the city does have the ability to exercise its own First Amendment right as government speech. Something like a flag pole is a traditional mechanism for the government to speak. And I think city manager Seislin honed in on a very important aspect of this, which is the city needs to maintain maintain control of that message. Other words, it's it's not a public forum where anybody can come and sort of post whatever message they want. Instead, it's decided by whatever the mechanism is, it's decided by the city council. And and that retention of control helps preserve the protections of government speech. So I think the bottom line is whatever the council decides to do, while it may invite, you know, discontent, political issues, or even potential lawsuits, you can't stop somebody from filing a lawsuit. I think the memorandum is pretty clear that there should be some comfort based on Supreme Court and Sixth Circuit law that the government can control that flag pole and decide what flags it will fly and what flies it will not fly.
Thank you. Well, where we left this off was a we tabled a motion that I had on the on the table that it was a short form approach to option number one as presented by the city manager to fly the US state city flag on municipal property. Just to get us started, I'll I'll read the motion that's tabled, then we can take it off the table to begin or discuss them. Result, the 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 motion was as followed, follows, resolved by this by the council of the city of Gross Point Park that the policy of the city of Gross Point Park is that only flags, banners, or insignia permitted to be displayed in city hall or on the grounds of Gross Point Park municipal facilities are those of the United States of America, the state of Michigan, and the city of Gross Point Park. So that's where we left it off. Who's the parliamentarian that can tell me how that comes off the table? Since it's rare, I think we can just say that as as we said, we tabled it for discussion today. We are now beginning that discussion, and so I believe that we can just say that the discussion is opened on the motion that we tabled. Okay, I see some nods, and that's what what I'll say. So that going back, that was actually moved and approved, so it is an active motion on the table. Further discussion, given the options presented, the this this motion, other other thoughts. So discussion, councilmember Fluid.
So I read a statement last month. I'm not going to I'm not going to read my my statement again, but obviously, you know, this this is my initiative. This is something that I think would serve to show not only the residents of this community, but people visiting the community where we stand. It's a very public display compared to the resolution stating that the city recognizes this is pride month, which I appreciate. But this is a much more public display of what I think indicates that we are a welcoming, inclusive, and equality loving community. Now, what what I've always hung my hat on when presenting this to council is that we could do basically what Oak Park did, which is to allow the flying of flags, which are not just the state, city, or national flag, but limit that to those federally recognized holidays. And within that, we can argue, you know, whether this is a federally designated month or not. But I think if you if you limit those options to those federally recognized days, it makes it a lot less complicated. And I'm I'm perfectly willing to sit here and discuss the merits of, you know, flying a POW MIA flag or a Pacific Islander Heritage flag, if there is such a thing. I'm perfectly willing to do that. So that I think is is one way of looking at it. I did get a lot of community input overwhelmingly. I I did get, I will, I will publicly admit, I got plenty of emails from people who did not support this. But the majority by far were from people who did support it. I appreciate the two residents who took the initiative to start a petition. I did, I don't know them, and I did not know that they were going to do that. So I appreciate that. A couple of sentences I do want to read from one of them. Both of those residents moved here from elsewhere, and they're fairly new to the community like I am. And part of what one of them emailed to me was, here in Gross Point, most of the folks celebrating pride are straight families honoring a time of love and diversity. It's not about being gay or straight or trans or cis. It's about loving yourself and your neighbors. Pride in its symbolism is entirely about us. That is the point of pride. It's anti divisive. Everyone is welcome. So that's much briefer than the statement that I read last time. Other than that, I just think it would be a tremendous gesture. I think it's a forward thinking gesture. I think it would make an excellent impression on families who are thinking about moving here. And I think we need to just be brave and do it.
Okay, further discussion? Councilmember Rulan?
Yeah, so I have just a short written statement because this is very important to me as well. And like councilmember Fluids, that I'd like to thank Heather and Lee and and the the multiple blocks on Belle Four, the multiple blocks on Beacon Field and Nottingham for for really reaching out and telling us how you feel and and supporting this. So so in recent weeks, we've all faced some deeply personal questions. We allow ourselves to remain indifferent to the plight of others. Now is the time to decide if we continue to stay silent, if we continue to allow systematic repression of violence against our fellow humans based on their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, or religion. Now is the time to implement change that will make our society respectful of all people's rights. And now is the time to have these these uncomfortable conversations. And now is definitely the time to do the to right the wrongs of the past. In the wise words wise words of Gandhi, be the change you wish to see in the world. In recent months, we've also witnessed extraordinary acts of kindness and generosity, particularly in our local community. That is why I'm confident that we as a community know the right decision we must make with regards to basic human rights, racial intolerance, and yes, recognition of a pride flag. We always, almost at every meeting, we make the comment, we take guidance from the state Capitol. They're flying the flag. I have been bullied and harassed throughout my life because of my skin color, because of my ethnic, regardless of the fact that I'm as American as almost everyone on this call. Our experiences are certainly different. My skin color or my sexual orientation have not presented me in fully violent situations. This is all the more reason to stand with others who have struggled far worse than I have. I can't imagine what my black friends and other people of color have gone through or my LGBTQ friends, but I'm sure it's at least a hundred times worse than what I've gone through, and I can't even fathom it. It takes my breath away some days just trying to put myself in your shoes. And it's all come to fruition in the last couple of months as well. This is what the pride the pride flag represents to me. All people, all religions, all colors, all humans. The proposed inclusion for one month of the pride flag does not diminish my profound respect for our United States flag. You will notice that I stand for every national anthem and every pledge of allegiance, regardless of where I am, for my own reasons. I also respect those that don't for their reasons, which are valid. I understand it is unlikely I will change many residents' opinion on this matter. But America has changed. Gross Point Park has changed, and I know I've changed. We all can, we all will continue to evolve, hopefully for the better. This decision in no way changes the goals for my role on city council. Know that I will continue to fight for transparency in our decision making, fiscal responsibility of our tax dollars, and inclusion of our residents' voices. I will stand up for you even if I get hurt for it, as I've already been harassed and bullied, and I'm currently getting harassed and bullied by a few cowards for my council activities. Luckily, I have hundreds of residents that will pick me back up each time, and I thank you for that. I am I'm in support of flying the pride flag in June as it represents for me all people, all religions, all colors, and all humans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Rulan. I guess I I'll weigh in briefly. As you know, I fully supported, as did we all, the adoption of the human rights or anti discrimination ordinance and also the proclamation that we just approved, recognizing June as LGBTQ pride month. I do have concerns about flying flags that are associated by many people with with a cause. I I understand that what this flag means to lots of people and would they would quibble with the idea that it's a cause. Some of the some of the emails I got do indicate that there are others that would see it in that light and would see it. Although we've we've gone on record as to the position of our city, some would see the flying of the flag as a as a political issue. And in fact, the city attorney characterizes it as political speech. And I think that it's wise to keep a small, nonpartisan community out of what would be considered political speech and by some considered divisive political speech, even though obviously by adoption of the two other agenda items this evening, we clearly, as a council, support, you know, ninety percent of the messages or a hundred, nearly a hundred percent of the messages that council member Rulan included in his his statement. The only one that I don't support out of that is the the actual flying of flags other than government flags because I think it takes us on a path that in the long term is is not particularly good for us as a smaller, non partisan citizen city and also will likely open us up to more time, effort, and cost as we deal with other issues. Someone once, someone told me, and I did not try to verify this, that there are only about fifty five nationally recognized days or months. I'm not sure where where that might go. Okay, further discussion. Councilmember Reed, I think you want to put your hand up. I can see it.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions for the city attorney. And and some of that we've covered on the federally the federal recognition. And the mayor just touched on that as well. And my research tells me that currently, the current administration tweeted once, and this will be the fourth year because to the, yes, tweeted once and three times did not. And President Clinton did, starting in two thousand. President Bush did not make the declaration, and President Obama did. That's, is that correct to the attorney?
That, yes, based on my research this afternoon, I think that's an accurate summary. Yes.
And and there's where that's my struggle. My heart says fly it, but my head usually prevails in these matters. And I am worried about unintended consequences because if it were federally recognized by statute, then any group that came to us that said, fly our flag, we would have the means to say, well, you're not federally recognized. So that's one thing. I've heard comments from some residents about us flying other flags. I'm not aware of any, and maybe the city manager can speak to that in his tenure, whether we've flown any other flags of any other organizations.
Not to my recollection, councilmember Reed.
And and, you know, depending on how this goes, we've had some comments from residents that we shouldn't be flying, if we're not going to fly this flag, we shouldn't be flying any other flags. So I I don't know if there was ever a policy to allow it. But that that I guess you've answered my question there. I've done, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. I've read everybody's emails, phone calls. I've looked at what other cities have done, and I've seen one example, and it is included in our packet, the city of Ypsilanti, where they voted for it and then they rescinded it. I definitely definitely do not want to put our city in the position of rescinding something like this. And that is a concern that I have. Ypsilanti is a very different city than we are. So I I worry about unintended consequences. I think most of you know me by now that I spend a lot of time thinking about the matters that come before council and researching them. And this is one that I think we might be opening up Pandora's box.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Granow? Unmute, please.
Yep, yep, sorry, I'm just getting my kids to be quiet. For the sake of time, I just agree with what the mayor said. And in the end of the, and essentially what council member Reed said, probably is for the dog. And at the end of the Mr. Howlett's memo to us, even if unsuccessful, that would be litigation over what flags to be flying on city property. The cost of the family would be potentially significant. I don't think we should be opening our city up to litigation like that. When you look at the three options, fly US state and city flags on municipal property, that's our current motion in front of us, that seems very reasonable. Fly federally recognized observances on municipal property. I guess there's a little ambiguity in whether that's the thirteen recognized holidays or the multiple things that are recognized on every day of every month of the year. Lastly, council decide on a case by case. I certainly do not want number three because I think there's very important issues. We were talking about the Tifa tonight, there's development, there's COVID. Families, we are supposed to be non partisan, families want to get back into the parks, they want classes. There's a myriad of things, and I do not want to spend two hours at every meeting debating whether the group in front of us that night gets to fly their flag or not. I think that's quite the distraction. So we should have a policy one way or the other. I think sticking to the government flags is the easiest policy to have. It's sticks with the tradition of what we've had and with what we've done tonight and our other two ordinances. We have clearly, I think, sent a message that all are welcome in our community. I hope people do not interpret this and say that you're not welcome in our community because certainly I welcome you in our community. I'm glad you're here, and you add a lot to our community.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, you had your hand up. Then we'll come back, councilmember Reed.
I would just echo what many have said. It does begin a slippery slope of Pandora's box, whatever you want to call it. If we're going to be intellectually honest, if we put up one ideological political flag, we are going to be pressed to put others up. If we pass this tonight, next meeting, we're going to get two requests, so on and so forth. You know, where does it, where does it all end? Once you put up any flag of any political strike, you do a disservice to the entire community because we all know that part of the community is going to like it and part of the community is not. And this question about are we an inclusive community? I think quite obviously we are. We just passed a proclamation and an ordinance. We are probably the most, we are the most diverse of all the gross points. So I think the message is out there.
That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Just a real quick question for our city attorney. On the proposed motion that talks about the grounds of Gross Point Park municipal municipal facilities, I want to make sure that that would not preclude any individual group, for example, having a picnic at Wimmo Point or Patterson Patterson Park from flying their, you know, their, whether it's the pride flag, their baseball team flag, or whatever flag they might want to fly at their picnic. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Whether it's the motion or I, that was not my intention, so that's a good question.
Yeah, and and I think the important distinction there is the flag pole is government property and a mechanism for the government to deliver the government message. One thing that's very clear under the First Amendment is, and, you know, thankfully for this, the government does not have the right to regulate the speech of individuals or groups. So while the government has its own right to speak, it can't infringe on the rights, it cannot infringe on the rights of others to express their feelings, beliefs, or whatever the case might be.
So I think.
No, we're not.
Individuals who are lawfully. So I think, I think individuals who are lawfully say on the grounds of the park, they have not given up any of their rights of free speech by being lawfully on the grounds of the park.
No, and my interpretation is that the city would have no ability, I shouldn't say no ability, but they would be exercising their First Amendment right at that point.
Right. Councilmember Granow?
Just to follow up, that would apply to our city employees too. For example, like at their desk, if they had a pride flag at their desk, that would be permissible as their First Amendment speech, or would that be not allowed?
I'd want to double check that and sort of cross-reference that against some of the other items that are out there in, whether it's the charter or our city code, in terms of employee speech, and just make sure that that would be something, either that is compliant or that's something, if that's something you guys wanted to address, you could. But I'd want to confirm that to be sure.
Well, it's a different category. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have put tremendous thought into this decision and was grounded, most importantly, by the human beings in my life, the people I care a lot about. And I've had the good fortune of beautiful relationships with people of all persuasions, and my world is richer for it. And having that diversity of perspectives has hopefully made me not only a better person, but a better decision-maker. I appreciate all of the people that have reached out and have considered every one of those outreaches, and it's important to me to be able to look each and every one of you in the eye tomorrow and know that I represented you well. And speaking of being able to look people that matter in the eye, not everyone participating in this meeting knows who our fellow park residents Dante and Ashley are, but for those that do, you know and admire the love they share, and you also know their pain. And I can't say I know them well, but I know enough to care for them, to want to be a leader for them, to show them how much they are wanted here, and to be able to look them in the eye. To Lee Curtley and Heather Wilberger, I want to be able to look you both in the eye too, and your beautiful and inspiring work on the sidewalks of Belfour, made for a much-needed place to walk and reflect on some of the beautiful mornings we've had recently. And Katie Farrelly, your words have been quoted at this table before too, and I refer to them again tonight, because they are powerful, and they are beautiful, and they are inspired. And our neighbors do deserve to be seen and heard, and I do see and hear them and want to continue to honor them. And I hear the youth of our community, and I want them to be proud of their leadership. And to that end, this week, I marched for freedom with my children. This week, I added to my Pride Week t-shirt collection. This week, I added June 13th to the 20th to my calendar. This week, I donated to Pride. This week, I walked Belfour. This week, I suggested that administration look into a couple of different methods for showing our pride, whether it be a method similar to what Growth Point South uses with its rock, or having our DDA and Tifa use their new marketing and business support dollars for Pride-related campaigns. I think those are all other tools we have available to us. And tonight, I voted for the Human Rights Ordinance enthusiastically, and tonight I voted for the proclamation. And tonight, I don't want my no vote on this matter to be seen as a vote against Pride or our LGBTQ community. It's more of a management decision, and I think important on that level. And I realize this is going to be very disappointing to some, but for those that know me and can see my life's work, you know this isn't a lack of courage or a sign of bigotry or hate. I'm so incredibly troubled that the community could think that. So I pray that this doesn't divide us as a community and that we don't lose all of the good that actually happened tonight too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further comment before we call the question on the motion? We'll call the question. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll. The motion on that.
Just for clarification, the motion is to only fly government flags. So yes, what would be to fly government flags?
Correct. The motion, a yes, is to essentially adopt what was identified as option one, which is to only fly government.
Yes.
Relan?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
No.
And Mayor Jenner?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. I echo a lot of the comments that Councilmember Hodges made, and I hope that the community takes that to heart. Next is community reports. We've covered an awful lot of the ground that was covered in committees, but we did have three very important committee, three very important committee meetings. And we'll do the ones first that we've already talked a lot about, and then we'll do the one we weren't really touched on too much. So we'll start with ordinance review and Councilmember Granow, who chairs.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance review met last Tuesday. We discussed three matters. One was the Human Rights Ordinance, which we voted on tonight. Second was an Ethics Ordinance, which needs more revamping, which will provide tools for the city on ethic for the leadership and a process for when there's a conflict. That we expect to come to you in our July meeting. We have our next meeting on June 30th at 5:30. We also discussed, and I have the city attorney working on, being that we are in a pandemic, what if any ordinances may be needed to give Nick, the city manager, or the city, tools to be able to address the pandemic? Not just this one, but future ones, future health emergencies. And secondly, is there a way to write an ordinance so that if there's a violation of the executive order, can there be a local violation that sort of corresponds so that we don't have to send the money to the state? He's looking into that. Those were our discussions as it relates to ordinance review.
Okay. Any questions on ordinance review? Okay, let's move on to, don't go away, Dan. Let's move on to Public Service Committee, and Councilmember Granow also chairs that committee.
So I will be brief, because a lot of what we talked about has already been discussed in our earlier agenda items. This isn't the best way to do this. I'm going to sort of hold this up. This is in our packet. That's the architectural design for the DPW building. We went over the building and the architect's design for the majority of our meeting. This should be in the agenda packet, which is available online for the community if you want to go look at that now. It's a public document. It's very sharp. They're trying to make it look like an old-style firehouse with big red doors, brick facade. I think it'll be a nice addition to the community. On top of that, we briefly discussed the DTs back in our community. Nick addressed that in his manager's report earlier. We discussed, and I know Councilman Relan brought this up, that sidewalks, especially in the parts of the city where DTs replaced a portion, the rest look abysmal. We decided to defer, which isn't what I know residents necessarily want to hear for a year, but because we are in COVID and it's the residents' responsibility to pay for the sidewalk when it gets repaired, we didn't want to saddle more expenses on residents when they could be having financial difficulties at this time, even though that leaves a lot of sidewalks in bad repair. However, DT should be finishing Northwest Sector, and so, once they're done next year, we're going to make a big push on it. We talked about street repaving coming up. The bids are out. I don't remember all the streets. I'm sure we'll post those, Nick, on the website so the people know. The one positive is that the engineers are going out and raiding the streets, and they're trying to do the worst streets first. I know that the City Parking Lot and Three Mile Parking Lot are in the bids. They're both in really bad shape. Lastly, if you've been following other communities that are older, you know that, and if you've been following infrastructure events since the Flint Water Crisis, you know that the state has passed a lot of new laws. Part of the law is that we have to remove all of our lead service lines at the city's cost, and we have an aging infrastructure for water. Again, we were hoping to put a package together to have a modern water infrastructure plan for the city of Growth Point Park. There will be revenue enhancements to be able to do that. We've decided to push that for a year because of COVID and let the city develop a better plan. In the interim, we will be dealing with the lead service lines kind of piecemeal, but we are developing a plan that's still in the works, and I believe that's what we talked about.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Councilmember Granow. Thank you, Councilmember Granow. Just reiterate, because I've gotten some questions about the citizens closest to the proposed facility. Could you reiterate that the main entrance will be off of Mac Avenue? Is that correct?
That is correct. There will be doors on the backside. It's also important to note, and this is in the plan that's up there, we're maintaining the alleyway that goes between Wayburn and Maryland, and that alleyway that, part of the alleyway on Mac, so if you went up the alley between Wayburn and Maryland, you could turn right and get out to Maryland. There is screening, a wall that will be built around it so that you don't see into the, there's a secured parking lot, and there's a visitor parking lot so that residents could visit DPW and buy, get the supplies or whatever services they need from DPW. And then there's a secured spot. It's walled, and on the backside where it faces residents will be landscaped specifically, mainly arborvitied to screen the wall from the residents. So a lot of thought has gone into making sure that the neighborhood is screened from this facility and, at the same time, making sure that the Mac Avenue and Maryland sides of the building are top-notch and fit into the business community.
So it'll be arborvitied or whatever, plus walls comforting the residents on Wayburn and Maryland?
Correct.
Thank you.
Marie?
Yeah, just a couple more questions on that topic. Councilmember Granow, will Wayburn be closed off? Will the trucks be able to get through from the alley to Wayburn?
No, so it's my understanding, and Nick can correct me, Wayburn's already closed off, that remains closed off. We have talked about, oh, actually, Nick, you might want to weigh in on this. There may be a gate to Wayburn, so that if they need to get through to Wayburn, they could, but that is not the intent. The intent is for them to mainly use Mac and Maryland.
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Granow, there is a potential gate for them to go into, you know, you basically would be coming in, you know, Councilmember Granow is right, there is, it is blocked there at Wayburn, but there is an area where we may create a gate to get into DPW, and then they'd be able to go out onto Mac. There's also consideration right now of being able to go in and out potentially on the Maryland side for maybe smaller vehicles, just like, you know, your pickup truck. And then the main entrances would be out of Mac Avenue.
Okay. And then just one more question, sort of on that same topic. With the construction, well, I mean, some members of Wayburn have contacted me with concern about losing their street, off-street parking there. Sort of at the, you know, at the end of Wayburn closest to Mac, will any of that parking be removed as a part of this project? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I'm picturing right now, and I believe at the very end of Wayburn there, it's kind of blocked off. I didn't, there is some vehicles that will park there. I believe that the brick wall will probably upbutt in that area. I do not anticipate parking, but I can't confirm that right now to be lost at this time.
So the parking for the residents on Wayburn, that's what their concern is? Will this facility take up any of the street parking they use?
I think to be careful, it doesn't take up any of the street parking that is adjacent to residential property. However, if residents on that block are using the space that is up almost to Mac, it does take that away, because that becomes a part of the, if you look at the diagrams, that becomes the main entrance to DPW yard, that first, however many feet of Wayburn were mostly. I hadn't thought of that as a neighborhood parking lot. It was.
I think so.
Probably used for that.
The teenagers and multiple cars, that's what I'm hearing. They, they need, you know, some don't have garages or driveways on the street side, so I.
That's something that we could, we should probably, Nick, ask the city to explore. There may be some other areas that we could provide some scattered parking that supports some of those really tight neighborhoods. I've got some ideas, but I want to explore them with the information first, now that you've raised that question.
Okay.
Councilmember Fluid?
So I'm on the committee. I was there for the meeting, but I would like to reiterate this for the people who are here tonight. So I had asked a question Thursday night about if letters had been sent to people who live in the close vicinity to the proposed DPW facility, and you said that they had been notified and that the response had been positive. Can you reiterate that and expand on that for the larger council meeting and what I assume is the larger crowd that's watching tonight?
So I believe what I said, and I may not have correctly stated it at the meeting, but the part of that Tifa amended development plan, there were notices sent out to almost 700 people within the Tifa district, including those closest to DPW. We have received comment as well, as, you know, people are seeing the developments go on our city website and discuss during city council meetings of significant interest to this building. And as I discussed earlier, I think what's going to be crucial for this building is that we do more engagement for reaching out, especially regarding the landscaping, the screening, noise concerns than any of those before our planning commission meeting in July. And I will continue to do that, you know, through our social media, through our city website, potentially looking into other areas we can reach out to residents.
Yeah, I see we had a resident recently join. I asked that you turn off your video unless and until you're called in for audio public comment. Thank you.
We, I would agree, we definitely need that resident engagement, but that's not what was said Thursday night. It's not.
Oh, I, okay. I do apologize, but I'll, okay.
Okay.
So I think, I think the residents who live in that district, I think we need to determine a radius for that facility, and those residents need to be specifically individually contacted and made aware that this is happening. Their concerns need to be listened to, and that was what I had asked about on Thursday night.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chairman Granow? This is, these are really questions related to the Public Service Committee. Just keep that in mind. Councilmember Rollon?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Councilmember Granow, if you can share, since we're sharing the drawings, I wonder if we can get that budget, that was the estimate that was shared that Nick was talking about earlier, if we can share that with the public as well, or at least to us?
Yeah, that has not been given to us, so when the city manager makes it available, I'm sure that'll be given to us.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's move on to the next report, which is Recreation Commission. And Councilmember Reed, you are the council's representative there.
Thank you. And much of what was discussed, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, some of the items were highlighted by the city manager. I'll try to keep it brief. The commission met via Zoom on June 3rd. We focused on the safe reopening of facilities under state and county guidelines. At Wimmo Point Park, plans are underway to open the pool with a target date of July 1st. The department is developing a plan for limiting capacity to 50%. In our case, that would be 250 people. Plans are not completely developed, but there will likely be three shifts with, in other words, residents will be allowed in for like a three-hour time slot with deep cleaning between each shift and likely fewer deck chairs to allow for safe spacing. The good news is that even with the 50% capacity, we will still be at the higher range of our attendance, if not, that capacity number is higher than our typical pool attendance. The city will also limit picnic permits to five per day of 20 people per permit. Play equipment will have signage that it is not sanitized and play at your own risk. Rentals for Tompkins Center and Lyndale Lodge are on hold pending further, the further phasing. Residents have been offered refunds. Some have elected to wait to see if their July events will be permitted. The city, the department, will adhere to the social distancing. And the city, the department will adhere to the social distancing when they set up for those events. Lavens Center remains closed as it's not covered by the most recent executive order. There have been some, some scheduled work has taken place in the Lavens. And the Marina, safety fencing and sandbags have been added to the Marina as the water levels continue to be an issue. In addition, we discussed the ongoing electrical transformer issues. That is a serious issue there. And there's no quick fix for that because my understanding is it's not up to code, so we can't just get an electrician to come in and patch it up. The commissioners are in favor of resurrecting a Marina Subcommittee to the Parks and Recs Commission to address ongoing issues and needed improvements. At Patterson Park, additional kayak racks will be added. This will not eliminate the waitlist, but the department plans to add 12 to 15 racks each year. They're also addressing erosion along the boardwalk due to high water. And finally, the dog park plans are currently on hold due to the pandemic.
Questions for Councilmember Reed?
I was gonna bring this up later, but I did see a comment by a resident that the administration has decided not to sandbag at Three Mile Park, and you mentioned erosion control. I was gonna bring that up. I'm a little worried that we are allowing the park to be eroded away into our lake. Can the city give a little more information on that?
Yes, so I do want to clarify, I, I do know that there is a discussion amongst this. We worked with OHM Advisors, who actually did a drone study regarding Windmill Point Park due to the significant high water concern we, we had with the Marina and along those areas specifically, especially, you know, all the way from in the main pier, all the way to our parking lot. Talking with OHM, they believed that the high water into the park would not create an erosion issue of, at Windmill right along the Marina seawall. All they would just have is some puddling and some water in that area. We did have a couple of weeks ago, there was some strong winds that came that actually pushed a lot of that water more significantly than was expected by our engineers. That's why you might have seen, there was actually safety fencing put back a little bit more just that, so we wouldn't have residents, you know, going to area where there's a little bit of water. And at this time, they advised that, you know, cost to put sandbagging all along this Marina, I mean, not the Marina, the seawall area wouldn't, would not have much effect due to there's just going to be some puddling and no erosion along Windmill Point Park. Now, there's a different story in regards to Patterson Park. I have visited out there, Patrick Thomas, our DPW has visited out there. There is sections of Patterson Park boardwalk that have seen significant erosion that we did not anticipate. And so that is a serious concern of the city right now. There are some concerns of the light poles along that area right now that could, you know, the foundation is close to being underwater right now. And so Chad Craig, our Park and Rec Supervisor, has been in touch with the Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle, formerly Department of Environmental Quality, to look at, actually going out to Patterson Park and reviewing what are our next best options for erosion over at Patterson. This is definitely not going to be a quick fix. This is going to be a costly fix that'll probably require, you know, concretes and riprap along Patterson Park and the boardwalk. And significant, you know, significant work is going to have to be done over at Patterson, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the excellent reports. That brings us to the finance report, and Councilmember Rogers.
Yes, Mayor, all that I have to offer to the decision-making process here is that all expenditures presented for consideration are routine and have been subjected, subjected to the appropriate departmental reviews and budget scrutiny. Just as a sidebar to note, now that the pool is likely to open going forward, when we have adequate information, we will likely need to do a budget amendment, so I'll just put that on the table too. But for the sake of what we're being asked to approve this evening, I would recommend that we do so. I would move accordingly.
All support?
Any other discussion? I'm seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grano?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hajes?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluit?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. Now we come to new and old business where the council and administration can offer information if they wish to share. First, we'll start with the council, Councilmember Grano, you've got your hand up.
Just for clarification, this is essentially council's public comment time?
Yeah, basically. Usually it's, you've got an idea, you have a thought, you want something, something for us to think about for a future meeting, that kind of thing.
Okay, I think that applies. I have a few matters. First, over the tenure of my tenure on council, I've been very positive about the park. And my opinion is backed by the numerous independent awards with which our community has been bestowed. In this time of great social and economic upheaval, I think it's paramount that our city leaders present a unified and positive message and vision for a great community. With that in mind, I have let some in our community down. At the end of the last meeting, my comments may have been taken as an attack on Councilman, Councilmember Reed's character. I publicly apologize to her, if my, and the community, if my comments were received that way. That was not my intent. I'm about building up our community, not tearing it down, and I want my communications to reflect that. I'm sorry I did not meet my own standards, and I also note that I've talked to Councilmember Reed privately. However, I think there are legitimate concerns about processes for ethical complaints and conflicts that have arisen in our city over time. I think both of those issues will be handled with the Ethics Ordinance that the Ordinance Review Committee is currently working on, which we previously talked about. I urge my colleagues to pass that in July. I would like council to also discuss the $5,000 approval delegation, which we just dealt with expenses on. I support it in theory for buying necessary city items for the city to run, but not for approving new contracts that fall under the monthly threshold. I think councils should not allow administrators to approve contracts for professional services with no oversight or approval by us. And I would like to have more conversation at a future meeting regarding this topic. Go and ask the mayor and administration to accommodate that. How much oversight should the council be willing to delegate to the administration? And then also, I do have a question at the park, which Nick was just sort of talking about. You know, a lot of families have cabin fever, and we're opening stuff, but is there more we can do this summer? Summer camps, classes in person or online, what more can we do for our residents?
So I know this is something that's very important to Chad Craig and myself, that, as you say, I know, I'm sure we've all can share that we've had a little bit of cabin fever regarding COVID-19, and we'd like to find ways that we can get outside, have a little fun, especially for residents. I know Chad has explored, especially with kids' classes and others down at the Parks and Rec. What are those current guidelines? He's, you know, looked at CDC. He's also talked with his colleagues of NERPA, which is a Northeast Recreation Group of Parks and Rec along the state here in Southeast Michigan. You know, a lot of them at this time are virtual. We're just kind of, they're just kind of waiting on further guidelines from the state in regards to interactions with young families and instructors. And we're continuously exploring at this time what we can do to help, you know, add more to the community that has been so restricted due to this virus.
Thank you. And Mayor, can we, at a future date, maybe discuss about, and I don't think it's really appropriate for the manager to on his own go out and RFP, sign contracts that never come before council?
I made a note.
Thank you.
That's one of that. I'll ask the administration to do some research in other cities first. Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
To the city manager, real quick, maybe a thumbnail sketch, what about the fitness center again? What are the hopes to get that open, if at all?
So as of right now, the current state guidelines do not permit the fitness center to open at this time. So we're just waiting on future guidelines from the state and or the county. We do know, you know, people are very anxious, as am I and others, I'm sure that visit the gym, that we'd like to get back there. And at this time, what we've done is to help those residents who have submitted to gym memberships. They've either been able to, you know, get a partial refund for part of their membership at the gym and/or extend their membership a little more into the year. And we're going to continuously look into, once we can open up, to have a safety protocol regarding cleaning of machines and others to ensure safety for our residents.
Thank you.
What else on the new and old business? Councilmember Fluit?
Um, I know we're still working on the, the policy for city council that we discussed at length in our last meeting, and hopefully that's going to come up in July, and we'll be able to approve that and move forward with those rules. I would like to submit that because this is something that we were working on, Communications Committee started working on this in December, so this has been in the works for quite some time. And one of the things that we felt when we first started this discussion was very important was moving public comment up in the agenda so that it came before votes. And I'm not speaking on behalf of Communications Committee. This is just something that I wanted to bring up tonight. But while we're still working on that, that big package on policy, I would like to move that we go ahead and move the public comment portion of the meeting up in the agenda, that we go ahead and make that one item happen now immediately with our July council meeting because I think it's too important to put off any longer.
Okay, we can do that.
Done?
I, if I'd known it was going to be that easy.
I think we have to have it at the end too. You gotta have both.
Pointed out in our, in our deliberations before, the, the administration has a lot to say about the structure of that agenda. And so my position has been, let's try to adopt the whole thing instead of piecemeal because it could get messy. But I'll leave that up to the city administration, since that's been part of, of every draft so far. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I would like to echo Councilmember Relan's comments earlier about if we can get the draft minutes earlier. In particular, for this council meeting, we had three sets of minutes plus a lot of material to cover. So we can help the city clerk by giving her our comments and also making them publicly if we have a little bit more leeway to review the minutes. So that's one thing. And then to address the public safety report, I've heard from, and I think others of us have heard from residents about police policies and plans, and we heard some of that tonight. I think it would be a, a good communication piece if we can share information about training and policies and initiatives from the public safety, if we can share that on our website so our community knows what we're doing and that we're taking it seriously. And then I've shared some resources with city administration that have come, some good resources that, you know, that have come from residents about practices that, tried and true practices that I'd like to explore.
Yeah, I can see Nick taking notes, so I think that he'll have a talk with the director. We can go from there. Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, Councilmember Hodges?
Quickly, the first time I raised my hand was to second Member Fluit's proposal that we move public comment up. But I did want to mention a couple of things. One, it would be helpful for me and our city council packets to also have a summary of upcoming committee meetings so we know when they are and can get them on our own calendar and inform our opinions so the, or inform our own due diligence and the like and decisions that we're expected to make, and we can get those scheduled in. So I think that would be a good, just regular part of our agenda packet, and that will also force us to get these meetings on the calendar in a timely fashion so that the community can participate in those meetings too, and we can all be adequately prepared. And then just reminding the community as well to be sure to complete the census. That's very important for future funding opportunities. And then to leave on a happy note, which is a salute to all of our graduates who have done so in a very epic time. And it's been kind of interesting to watch the whole process of saluting them unfold and to see the entrepreneurialism and innovation that has presented itself in doing so, and I'm just very proud of them and very proud to be part of a community with so many high-quality young people. So congratulations to them all and best wishes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Relon?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I have a little disturbing fact here. I'd like to address a disparaging anonymous letter that has been sent and circulated to various departments at my place of employment. The anonymous writer's goal was clearly to attempt to, to get me fired or smear my name, and that's not really acceptable. It's pretty weak. Keep in mind, I work for a, a big health system in Detroit, and we're in the midst of a global pandemic, and Detroit was horribly impacted. And this anonymous writer chose last month to burden our frontline heroes with absolutely false claims that I vilified our generous community benefactors and I'm a terrible representative, representative of the health system. Granted, an anonymous letter does not carry much validity and shows the true sign of a coward. It is a shame that this is a political tactic used to discredit and defame me in my elected position. For numerous reasons, this letter did not get any attention due to this anonymous writer's completely inappropriate, defamatory and false claims, as well as my outstanding reputation at Henry Ford Health System. I can only assume this is in response to my insistence on transparency of government operations and my questions of details involving the proposed art center project, which still remain unanswered. I would like to be very clear, the prospects for new development in our city are incredibly exciting. The performing arts center and gallery could be a fantastic addition to our community. I have absolutely no addition, no issues with the project, and I'm hugely thankful to our generous donors. If you remember from that October meeting when Dr. Shap left the room yelling at the crowd, I ran out there to tell him that the crowd isn't angry at you, they're angry at this process, not him. As I've stated from the very beginning on my campaign, campaign, I ultimately believe in resident inclusion and transparency. And as I stated previously tonight, I've been bullied before for the color of my skin, my family's different culture, and my religion. But I've never been bullied for my integrity to follow good governmental processes, and I will continue to ask these questions on behalf of our residents. And I want to thank my family, and I want to thank city council, and I want to thank the hundreds of residents that constantly support me and tell me to keep asking these questions. Please reach out to me at any time. I appreciate everything. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anything else before we move to public comment? I think it's time to move to public comment. Do we have some written comments, I think, first? Is that true?
Yes, Mayor Denner, I do have one public comment that did not meet the meeting guidelines. Other than that, I think I have 12 public comments to read off to the city council. The first is from Mr. Greg Donnelly. GPP is much to celebrate, but not a history of structural racism that persists throughout physical reminders of its horrors. Not that long ago, many who live here today weren't welcome, kept out via redlining and restrictive covenants. Over decades, and as recently as 2014, GPP built walls and barriers at about one-third of the streets shared of Detroit. Clear messages that Detroiters aren't welcome. Fiscal barriers, whether walls or dead ends, exist today at five streets where they could easily be removed. Number one, Cordy, east of Alter. Number two, Brooks, St. Paul, between Alter and Wayburn. Number three, Gotti, east of Alter. Number four, Wayburn at Mac. Number five, Grayton at Mac. Recently, markers of racism have been removed from many American cities. Declaring its Confederate monument's nuisances, New Orleans removed them. Former Mayor Kobo's name was removed from the building, named after him in Detroit. In just the last week, Birmingham, Alabama, is removing its Confederate soldiers and sailors monument. United Daughters of the Confederacy removed their Confederate soldier statue in Alexandria, Virginia. Philadelphia's mayor had a statue of former Mayor Rizzo removed, and Virginia's governor announced removal of Robert E. Lee statue from Richmond. As the country protests injustice, it's time for GPP to right some wrongs. Please have our DPW tear down these five barriers now, this summer before Labor Day. Do it as a symbol of the better. Do it as the symbol of the better future we aspire to. Let's celebrate our neighborly connections to Detroit. What are we waiting for? This comment was submitted by Wendy Relan. Back in December, a team of us city planners, architects, development, and finance professionals presented the planning commission with recommendations why the city must engage with a master planning professional team to update the current inadequate master plan. Without a robust master plan, projects will emerge and develop without a full vision of the future of Gross Point Park. Yet another example of lack of vision is the placement of the proposed DPW at the doorstep of Mac and Alter. As Councilman Grano stated at the meeting last month, you don't want a DPW garage at your front doorstep of your community, because you don't want to store dump trucks and sewage equipment at your doorstep. The reality is Mac and Alter is just as much a gateway to our city as Jefferson is. My point is the following. A true master plan would have guided this decision-making, identifying the highest and best use for gateway sites within the city and encouraging a vital walkable community. The proposed DPW building at Mac will be yet another obstacle to a potential thriving business district. The Huntington Bank was certainly not the best use for a high-profile gateway development. A master plan would have fully studied all sites for best use, such as mixed-use retail, restaurant, housing developments, developments that would generate tax revenue and children to fill our under-capacity schools. The Huntington Bank parking lot and mini-branch office, in addition to a proposed block and a half of DPW, will not encourage a robust Mac Avenue business district. It will kill it. What could have evolved into an exciting development that could engage the two cities will now be yet another example of closing the gateway to Detroit. This is another missed opportunity. This comment was submitted by John Swegels of Lake Point. We cringe when driving in the shores on Lake Shore when the cop is in the meeting and you're going over 35. We frown when the three-second, not long enough, yellow traffic lights goes on Jefferson in front of the city's park. However, when I hear my back door open at 3:00 a.m., I want to call 911 rather than load my 1911. How about a flag that says we support our police? Any flag to fly from all GPP public buildings should represent who we are, what we stand for, and what GPP is. It should not represent a minority point of view. It should not be ethnic. Top two are German and Irish, not religious. Most are Christian, not sexual. Most are heterosexual. LGBTQ should and does have discrimination protection, but does not represent my community and should not be on our flagpole to look like it does. This list was submitted by Tim Wise. Good evening, all. I'm writing it with a plea to have Amay, councilmember Amay Fluid recuse herself from voting on the flags on municipal property. It is not appropriate to permit her to be able to vote when she clearly has a conflict of interest being a current member of WeGP. WeGP is a group that deceptively claims to be nonpartisan and a uniting force. I would like each council member to do some soul searching and honestly give your opinion of whether or not this agenda push is uniting or dividing a community. Amay is clearly on counsel to advance the agenda and interest of a partisan group. This comment comes from, uh...
Nick, can you read who that was from?
Uh, resident Timothy Wise.
Thanks.
And I know we're not, I'm, I'm not going to respond to that. I'm not responding. But can we weed out the slanderous public comments? I mean, I had one last month, too.
Well, yeah, the, the issue with public comments is the public can make a comment. Unless they're disrupting, you know, in a, in a live meeting, if they're disrupting a meeting, they can be called as out of order. But public comments are public comment, whether you like it or you don't like it.
I understand that. Maybe we need to have a discussion about that at some point, because there's got to be a line at some point with what... Somebody can't come on public comment and say, "Amay Fluid killed my dog." I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, consider that in the rules of council.
Okay, thanks.
City manager, please, continue.
Yes, this comment comes from Richard Schroeder of Lake Point. I find it offensive to be limited to 250 words when city council members blather on as long as they want. I have supported LGBTQ lifestyles since 1972 when I was 17. I do not want the flag of any special interest group on our tax-funded flagpole. Ms. Fluid and Mr. Relan said in their election campaign that they would fly the flag if elected. They were selling access to public property for votes. Is our property for sale for votes? Did any of you know that Confederate Heritage Month is a nationally sanctioned month? National Police Officers Week is also. Can we fly the Confederate flag and thin blue flag? I have worked in healthcare for over 40 years alongside all sorts of people that practice many lifestyles. Some of my closest friends are LGBTQ people. I will always support them. But not a flag that was obviously for sale and politicized by two people to acquire a council seat. This flag had no political connotation to me until the two of them attached a political agenda to it. Shame on you.
Can you repeat that name as well?
Richard Schroeder was the resident.
Thank you.
This comment comes from Jay Hackelman of Berkshire. GPP city council, please restrict our municipal flagpoles only to flying flags that represent federal, state, county jurisdiction. The city has already spent too much time on this political question. This comment comes from Michelle Lindsay of Lake Court. Mayor Danner and city council members, tonight I ask you, ask that you delay voting on bond approval for the new DPW. I believe that our DPW team deserves a new state-of-the-art facility. However, before funding is secured for this project, several important steps need to take place. While architectural renderings are a start, without RFPs for construction, there is no way to ensure accurate cost of the project. The project is yet to be presented to the planning commission, which is a vital step and would happen before cost estimates are secured. Please take time to do the due diligence needed to ensure that as a city we are meeting our fiduciary responsibilities to our residents. This comment comes from John Callis of Nottingham. Regarding the plans for the new DPW on Mac at Maryland. As a retired architect, I am displeased by the proposed design. The facade is outdated, perhaps belonging to early 19th century municipal styles. It offers nothing relevant to contemporary expressions. The new bank building on Alter Road offers a more appropriate look. And the mildly gabled corners of the north elevation indicates nothing of what this building is. Better to show a flat, consistent parapet all around the perimeter and break up the long, narrow facades with varying materials, surface planes, and more confident expressions of what is happening inside the building. The proposal is an artificial attempt to impose a fake, classic symmetry on an unsymmetrical, modern utilitarian building. The simplicity of the rectangular plan does not need to be overly complex to be appealing. Further, it should not reflect what we see in the government buildings at Jefferson and Maryland, two miles away. The proposed design does not fit its purpose in this time or location. With respect, I suggest that you ask the architect to go back to the drawing board with the new set of design instructions. This comment comes from Max Viner of Lake Court. I wanted to comment on several agenda items. I support the DPW garage movement proposal. Having followed the efforts of TIFA as well as the BDA, I see the proposal as both prudent and far-sighted for the long-term development of our community. Regarding the flag and LGBT statement, I again want to voice my disapproval of the overt politicization of this council. These motions are outside of the council's purview. Furthermore, as a parent of two small children, I am disheartened by the apparent priorities of the council over the past months. We choose to move to this community largely because of the wonderful facilities and programs for children. However, at present, we have no access to the pools, library, trolleys, theaters, and playground equipment. There is a great deal of frustration in the community over these closures and lack of coherent communication regarding a plan to reopen and provide summer programs. As a young family, the fact that council's been spending an inordinate amount of time pursuing political statements, yet hasn't, to my recollection, addressed these issues in council meetings. And this is a huge disservice to your constituents. This comment comes from Brian Brenner of Lake Point. I request that this letter be read at the council meeting. I want to convey my support of the plan to move the GPP DPW building from its current location at Jefferson and Maryland to Mac and Wayburn. As a 45-year GPP resident, I have seen many changes along our Jefferson corridor, movies at the Esquire Theater, picking up newspapers for paper routes, purchasing my first car at Jefferson Chevrolet. For years now, several of the lots fronting Jefferson Avenue, arguably the entranceway to Gross Point, have been underutilized. One being the lot housing the Public Works structures. With respect to the DPW building, it is part of the problem. At best, an unattractive first impression of GPP. More realistically, structures that are 100 years old have lived their functional lives and never designed for their current purpose. The time has come for a Public Works building that is more efficient, designed for the job, providing a better workspace for workers at a more appropriate location. With the current development occurring along Jefferson and the Jefferson Chalmers neighborhood, we need to do our part to enhance this area. Connecting a historic divide across Alter and transforming the cohesive thoroughfare. Paving the way for future projects that will truly enhance our living experience in this amazing community and signaling to all that we welcome them to come spend time with us in GPP. This comment comes from Christina Suzanne. Hello, councilmembers and Ms. Smith. Thank you for your dedication to Gross Point Park. I am writing this letter to support moving the GPP DPW to facilitate creation of the SCOP Center for the Performing Arts. While I have not lived in Gross Point Park long, by local standards, I love our community and see the art center as a great potential for growth. With the closing of Trombley, recent flooding, and plans to not restore the pool at Pierce, we have lost a lot. The art center will add something back. The location is ideal for welcoming our neighbors in Detroit, as well as those in the other points to congregate together. The recent viral pandemic has emphasized the importance of arts and healing the body, while opening our doors to closer relationship with neighbors in Detroit will heal our community. On a purely practical level, those who visit the center will see how amazing Gross Point Park is, a boon to our housing values. Finally, the restaurants and shops on Kirchville and Charlevois are sure to benefit. Last public comment submitted by Alan Brenner. I have been a resident of our wonderful community of Gross Point Park for 45 years. Two of my, uh, three children have chosen to remain in the city, and all five of my grandchildren live here. I value our community and am concerned about it. I want you to know that I and my wife strongly support the proposal to move the Public Works building to a new location near Wayburn in Mac. I would like this message read into the record of the next council meeting. Mayor Danner, that's the submitted written comments to city council.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any live comments in the queue?
Yes, we do. And I'll have Assistant to the Manager Smith open it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I can't hear. If Leah is talking, we're, we're not getting it.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I had myself muted through Zoom, so I apologize. Um, what I was saying was I will share a screen with the three-minute timer for all of the participants waiting in the queue list. And when I call your name, I will unmute you and start the timer, and you can go ahead with your comment. Our first public comment is from T.B. Clausen, who is no longer on the line. Leah Greenwell, you are next in the queue. So I'm going to share my screen, and then I will unmute you if you give me one second. And Leah, please go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
My name is Leah Greenwell. At the Black Lives Matter walk on Kirchville last week, I heard from black neighbors how much it meant to them to see this community standing in solidarity. We're all in agreement that every single resident should feel welcomed, valued, and protected in their daily life. I'm heartened to hear Mayor Danner, the city manager, Chief Poloney, and other council members tonight commit to eradicate racism in all its forms. At the same time, when you see Gross Point Park mentioned in regional or national outlets, our history of racism is prominently noted. A Michigan Public Radio piece about last week's march noted that we are, quote, "a community with a deep and lingering history of racism." Another headline reads, "A Detroit suburb attempts to sneakily gate itself off." Even though we are glad to see the recent mistakes on Kirchville corrected, city actions affirmed that reputation. The border walls and fences that continue to block roads along Alter are physical reminders of an era that no longer represents our community's values. I hope these barriers will be addressed in the master plan that was referenced tonight. I'm embarrassed of this track record on race. It does not represent or respect so many of us who also appreciate the privilege of living in an otherwise exceptional community. What I find most hopeful in this moment is that we don't have to wait for actions from state or federal government to make meaningful change. We can take those actions right here at the local level. As I sit on my porch near the Detroit border, I often see Gross Point Park police go by. I've never actively witnessed anything but professionalism. That said, I know as a white person, my encounters with law enforcement do not resemble the experiences of black residents and visitors to our city. Driving while black, biking while black. In our city and especially near its borders, these innocuous activities have been reasoned to be pulled over. This is bias at work and does not keep us safe. What is Gross Point Park's use-of-force policy? How do we ensure we are not overpolicing black residents and visitors for minor offenses? How does the department handle misconduct? The city should be transparent with residents about current policies and specific anti-racist actions it will take. Training alone is inadequate, and the human rights ordinance does not directly address this issue. In light of the movement around our country for justice, Gross Point Park has the opportunity to lead with action and show what our values are. I stand with my neighbors and ask the city to act with urgency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Assistant to the Manager Smith, you lost the timer on your screen during that comment. At least, I don't, I wasn't able to see it. So for the next one, I just wanted to call that to your attention.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Danner. Can you repeat that again? I had a hard time hearing you.
Uh, I don't see that, we didn't see the timer, at least I did not, on the screen. What I see is...
Okay. Okay, so if other people, if other people saw it, then I'm going to try again and...
I think, I think I'm going to be okay this time.
Okay. Um, Mary, you are next. I'm going to reset the timer for you. You are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Some random thoughts, some of which have already been covered earlier. But I want to echo Member Fluid's request that the minutes be corrected about the public hearing about the amended plan last month. You know, the statute requires this council to put together a public hearing record. It should be accurate. You can easily find out the correct answers by looking at the stream. I'm obviously beyond disappointed in the vote tonight. But I'll say that the plans inadequacy is really kind of an accurate reflection of how the TIFA has really operated to date. It's really amusing to me at this point how time is of the essence on anything related to the DPW and all things art center. But seven months after an election, based on change, there is still no change in the council rules or an ethics code. Why, Mr. Mayor, is the same energy not put into those items? It has allowed you, frankly, sir, to manipulate the agenda time and time again. It's really, really beyond the pale. I'd also like to back up Ms. Fluid again about the public service meeting last week, because I, too, was on that call or on that Zoom. And I actually asked the same question she did at the end. I think it was very clear, Mr. Manager, what we were asking. And we have been asking, and I live very close to where this DPW building is going to go up. We are asking if the residents in the immediate area have been reached out to and given total notice about what's going on that site, the disruption, what the building will look like. As you yourself admitted the other night, that there could be entrances off of Maryland and the like. So I will definitely follow up with you about that. Those people have the right to know. And that's what we are asking. And I think it was abundantly clear. I realize that during public comment, it's hard to have an extended discussion about ethics and conflicts. But they obviously were raised about Ms. Fluid. I think there's a lot of other conflicts we need to talk about in this town, particularly membership on boards and interrelations with people on boards and our elected officials. And I look forward to having that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, give me one second here. Iris Steinberg, you are going to be next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please go ahead. Iris, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah?
Now I can hear you. Please go ahead.
Great. So you didn't catch any of that? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, Iris Steinberg, I'm on, I live on Wayburn. And I also, as Leah had mentioned, I attended the March for Justice the other day that went down Kirchville, and for a lot of residents, I think that are, that are angry, that, that are having a lot of feelings about what is going on in our country, and I really would like to see Gross Point Park acknowledge that and give us more information on what kind of training we do with our police officers. I heard, I think it was councilperson Robson, mentioned that we didn't need to put the flag outside of the municipal building, that it's enough to post the ordinance online because it's obvious that we're inclusive. And I think maybe that's easy for us to say as a white person or someone who's straight. I think it's important for us to, to even ask maybe how other people feel. Do you really feel included? What, you know, what are your experiences like? So I don't know if, you know, we do any kind of reaching out to our black residents, but I really would like to-
We don't.
-to see this as more of a, of a discussion moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
As of right now, Mayor Danner, that is the last spoken public comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for participating in, in the public comment section, and, and thank you, council, for your discussions and productive meeting. At this time, I would like to adjourn the meeting. By acclamation, all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.